It looks like we have everyone. We can go ahead and get started with the meeting. So, good evening and welcome to the February 16th, 2021 Legislative Meeting of the Happer-Horsham School District Board of School Directors. Please be aware that this meeting is being recorded. The opinions expressed by any member of the public do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Happer-Horsham School District Board of School Directors and are solely those of the presenter. The Happer-Horsham District Board hereby expressly disclaims any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public. If we could please stand for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Riker, could we please have a roll call?
Thank you, Madam President. Jennifer Wilson.
Here.
Dave Brown. Teresa Brown.
Here.
Eric Coombs.
I know he's here. He was in the in the group participants. I don't know if he's been brought in.
Yeah, he was a panelist and then he, I think he left and came back, but I'm re-promoting him now.
Okay. Susan Hunzey-Rothoff.
I just got in.
Here.
Thank you. Marion McCouch.
Here.
Jim Greenall.
Here.
DJ Schultz.
Here.
Tara Connor-Holston.
Here.
And we did have an executive session prior to this for to discuss legal personnel matters. So we are going to start the night off with a couple of presentations, starting with one from the Keith Valley Middle School. And I'm assuming, Mr. Kertcher, you're going to introduce them.
Sure. Yes, Madam President. Thank you. So, thank you, Dr. Everslog, Dr. Taylor, Dr. King, and members of the school board, for this great opportunity for us to share with you just an outstanding program that we have at Keith Valley. You know, we're certainly proud of all of our efforts to engage students and families at Keith Valley, and our Project Lit is just a shining example of this. So we've been running Project Lit since 2019, and it's been under the leadership of Lisa Quinn, who's Keith Valley's outstanding librarian. So tonight, I am so proud to introduce both Mrs. Quinn and our seventh grade principal, Mrs. Kai Coleman-Morris, and they're going to share with you all the outstanding attributes of Project Lit. So, Mrs. Quinn, over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Kertcher. Thank you, everyone, for having us here tonight. I'm going to share my presentation with you. Okay, so, um, Project Lit is now an international movement. It began as a classroom project created by Jared Amato, who's an English teacher in Tennessee. He engaged students in his own school and eventually word spread about this Project Lit community or project libraries in the community idea, which is to nurture authentic reading identities, champion young people and books, rediscover and celebrate books, develop cultural competence and expand our thinking, amplify voices and stories of students and educators of color, rewrite the narrative about which texts and authors are worthy of academic study, and provide students with as many positive literacy experiences as possible.
So one of the things in regards to Project Lit that Lisa Quinn and I noticed right away was the natural alignment that it had with the Happer-Horsham School District Culturally Proficiency Action Plan. And these are just three of the ones that aligns with. One, Goal One, culturally responsive practices. In terms of our conversations with students and parents, we have a lot of different layers of cultural, excuse me, of character development and storylines that combat racism, that talk about a lot of different variety and diverse backgrounds and which students may or may not know about, and some of those are the values, practices, and beliefs. Goal Two is the family and community engagement, which encompasses some of our parents. As you know, given our age of population, parents can't drive, so pre-COVID, they bring the kids to school and some of them curiously stay and listen and overhear our conversation. And then some parents purposely engage in conversation with their students to give a little bit more insight into some of the things they've read about, and also to reinforce some of those different diverse beliefs at home. And then Goal Four, curriculum and instruction, as you are well aware, Happer-Horsham is going through a English Language Arts overhaul from K to 12, and Project Lit can certainly be a resource and added layer to help teachers and students come up with some different variety of books as we move along the continuum for cultural proficiency.
The Project Lit community works to produce annual lists of books for the various club chapters to read, one list for young adult and one list for middle grade. Creating the list ensures that diverse voices and stories are honored and that the books are high-quality and modern, making them more relevant to student readers. Here at Keith Valley, each year, participation grows. We currently have about 26 student club members, and we also encourage the guardians of these students and staff members to join us. The club members and the book selections are central to the success of Project Lit. Above all else, we work to create a community where everyone's ideas are valued. And to choose the books for each month, I take a subset of the middle grade list, about four or five choices, and present the books to the book club during a meeting. We use a Google form to rank the choices by preference, and the top choices are selected and purchased for the groups. We supply a copy to each student and guardian pair and staff member. And when the books are returned, I give a copy to every language arts teacher for their classroom library and then catalog the others for use of the book club in a bag, so that students who want a book club experience have diverse options. I include a copy of the discussion questions from the Project Lit Book Club meeting with the books. Meeting formats are predictable, and we've been fortunate enough to have teachers and staff invested in joining in. This is very helpful in the virtual meetings so that I can strategically form the breakout rooms to include a staff member in each room as a discussion facilitator. It also creates more connections among students, guardians, and staff in our school. Before COVID, we held evening meetings monthly in the library, and we shared snacks and celebrated the books in person with small group discussions and games and activities. We've created our own comic strips after reading the graphic novel New Kids, and we adorned a cherry tree in the school courtyard with strips of fabric carrying wishes to make our own wish tray. The school community embraced the wish tree activity, and everyone was welcome to place a wish on the tree. Now we meet monthly on Zoom, and our activities have been conundrum and booket trivia games, which the students ask to play on repeat. Participants enjoy the Project Lit Book Club and a few shared feedback for you tonight. The purple boxes are statements from students, oranges from a parent, and pink is from a teacher. Our Project Lit Book Club makes space for conversations that deal with culture, race, and matters of equity. We also read books with diverse voices that are simply fun. The overall sentiment is that the students enjoy the book club as an activity to experience with others, and the adults are very interested in hearing the students' ideas about the conflicts and experiences in the novels.
So with some of those experiences, Mrs. Quinn had the opportunity to send out to our book club members, which, by the way, has grown twofold in our initiation, a recipe based off of one of our books from the desk of Zoe Washington. The protagonist in this book actually was very much into baking, and we found that one of our sixth-grade students very much liked our protagonist, liked to bake. So she had an opportunity to take the recipe from Mrs. Quinn, and she made some fruit loop cupcakes. And this was just one of her emails and responses in the picture of what she did with her parents. So, what does Project Lit need in terms of program support? Book purchases. Mrs. Quinn, although a librarian, is very creative in terms of the interlibrary resources, in terms of getting books for all, but oftentimes, that will bring on Mr. Kertcher for some of those additional monies for book purchases. We very much would like to see some support in that area, only because we have some students who can't afford books and also students who may want to purchase their favorite books and like to reread. As previously stated in talking about some of those interdisciplinary and curricular connections in the previous slide in regards to ELA, there are many more layers than just English language in which Project Lit connects, looking at things such as science, social studies, and math. Our community engagement has been limited to our parents, but we would very much like to open up to people who are avid readers or people who are interested in young adult fiction as another way to just to connect and reinforce some of the things that are happening at Keith Valley. One of our favorite authors, Jason Reynolds, one of the books we read, will be great speaker order for us to visit with. And given this virtual environment, we're hoping that maybe we can connect with some of the authors to come and actually do one of the meetings for us in the near future. And also too, as you know, with the COVID state that we are still in, many of us are at home enjoying movies. Many of the movies that we enjoy come from some of these books. So it'd be really nice to have some interlaying in our meetings with some of those movies and have a showing for our students.
That's what we have to share with you for tonight. Thank you so much for this opportunity to talk with you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. I'll just jump in there. Thank you so much, Keith Valley. Some amazing opportunities you're offering for our students in the community. As Mr. Kertcher said, just want to echo those sentiments. Thank you to Dr. Everslog, Dr. Taylor, Dr. King, and our school board for the opportunity to showcase our school at Blair Mill. We're really proud of the work that we've done throughout this year. As you know, I think one of our most challenging pivots has been teaching in the hybrid learning environment, where we're really trying to make sure that we're capturing students both that are in front of us as well as at home. And that's really what our third-grade teachers are going to focus on tonight. And as much as it is our third-grade team, and I'm deeply appreciative of them to take on this task, they're really highlighting a lot of the work that's going on at Blair Mill, K5, and I'd say even within Happer-Horsham across the elementary schools. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Kelly Kazitz, one of our third-grade teachers, and Christina Reinhardt, one of our third-grade teachers.
Thank you so much, Dr. Thomas. And thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to highlight some of the wonderful things that are going on at Blair Mill. So tonight's presentation is going to be focused on the idea that we are, or that connecting with our students is a main priority for us. We'd like to share with you tonight some ways that we have been providing opportunities for our students to connect whole class, student to student, and how we are connecting with and supporting our students when they are at-home learners.
Okay, so the first type of connection that we want to highlight is our whole-class connection and really building that classroom community. So the first way that we do this is through our daily morning meeting and closing circle. Morning meeting is a time where we all get to come together and jumpstart our day. We really participate in a greeting, a share question, and an activity. And as you can see, we set up in our classroom webcams. In my classroom here, I have my webcam on top of my monitor. Kelly puts hers on top of the smartboard. That's so our friends at home can see our friends at school, and we can really interact through group discussion and build that classroom community. And then the same goes for closing circle. It's a time where we get together at the end of the day to reflect on how our day went. We a lot of times talk about reflection questions, kind of like what went well today, what could we improve tomorrow? And again, just that opportunity to connect at the end of the day. And then also during morning meeting and closing circle is when we spend time to talk about special events that are going on, such as our class birthdays or holidays and cultural events that are going on. And then more specifically, since it's February, we've been really celebrating Black History Month. So morning meeting and closing circle has provided us a great time to teach a couple mini lessons and really focus on those topics of Black history. Another way that we connect our class as a whole is through shared lessons. At Blair Mill, the different grade levels have been gradually incorporating more times where their kids at home log on for live lessons. Specifically, in third grade, we have our students log on for our math lessons and for our language arts lessons. So again, you can see we have students projected on the side monitor, and then the kids at home can see our smartboards as well. So this has just really provided an awesome opportunity for our students to learn from each other and learn from group discussions and also hear peer input. So with the with the monitor and being able to observe the class, it's really easy to to monitor both groups of students and engage them completely. And then the last way that we connect as a whole class is kind of across classrooms. We wanted to emulate a typical year, and during a typical typical year, a lot of times, grade levels will get together to do fun activities, to celebrate important events, and we wanted to try to emulate that as best as we could in a virtual and hybrid setting. So this is just one example that we have done it as third grade. We all got together on a Teams meeting right before our winter break, and we were able to engage in some fun winter activities together, and it was just really to bring a sense of normalcy to our students and really build that community at Blair Mill and with third grade.
So we're also focusing on giving students as many opportunities as possible to connect with one another. One of the ways that we have been able to do that is through the use of the breakout rooms. When half of our class is with us and half of our class is learning from home, it's been a really wonderful opportunity to pair them up so that they can still work together. So a student at home would be paired up with a student in school. They can complete an activity. They can participate by witnessing and discussing and contributing to science investigations. And it just gives the boys and girls opportunities to be more independent and to work with their peers and learn more about each other in the Microsoft Teams breakout rooms. We also, we also try to give the students time where they can not only connect to one another, but that they can practice some of their writing skills. So we do a weekly activity called Weekend News, and some weeks, again, we use the breakout rooms, and the boys and girls get together and they share with each other and have conversations about how their weekend went, what they did. But we also, with the writing piece, we have them write responses. And then, so this particular example that you're seeing is a Canvas discussion post, so they reply or respond to the discussion post, and then they're able to post comments and discussions to each other, and they're able to ask questions and and to probe further with more information. And so it's kind of a two-fold where they're learning more about each other and getting to talk about their weekend, but they're also learning through the questioning from their peers how to add even more detail to the writing. And then finally, for the, for as far as supporting here, we have, you know, one of our main focuses has been supporting the students when they are at-home learners. So these are just some of the ways that we have been doing everything that we we can and always trying to brainstorm and come up with new and better ways to connect with those students when they're home and make sure that they feel that they are supported. So we have been lucky enough in third grade specifically and some other grades where there are some support staff members who can sign on to Teams and can have the boys and girls that are home sign on with them and get support, answer questions, and clarify activities. We also make sure that when we're planning and preparing our lessons, that, you know, thinking about who our learners are, making sure that we have clear directions, providing videos that may give examples and additional information. We do that as often as possible. We try to incorporate many different ways for children to respond. Sometimes it may be written. Sometimes it may be a game, like through Kahoot. Sometimes we may use an online tool where, like Classkick, for example, is one where the boys and girls are actually working on an activity, and you, as the teacher, I can sign on at that same time and see their work and support them while they're doing each of the activities on the slide. At times, they can make videos just to give them different opportunities and different ways for responding. And then again, putting them together into buddy groups and working in the breakout room so that the peers can support each other. So this particular slide, we just wanted to highlight, we've really taken time to try to showcase the student work. So these are just some pictures of the bulletin boards from around our entire school. And the reason that I really wanted to showcase this is it is really very much a blend of work that the students are doing in school, but also work that the boys and girls are doing at home. There are activities here where some of the assignments were completely done at home, and then they were submitted through Canvas or were brought back into school when it was their hybrid day. So the boys and girls are still having an opportunity to have some hands-on activities, and it just, I know that they really enjoy seeing their work, their hard work hanging up in our hallway. So I just, this picture was just to show some examples of some of their wonderful work that they've completed.
And then the last thing that we wanted to show you is a video that we created. We invited HHTV and Bob Anderson to come and showcase hybrid learning in action, so you really can get a glimpse into our classrooms at Blair Mill and also see some more teacher perspectives. I'm just going to switch over to Google Chrome. And here we go.
Can one person make a difference? What are your thoughts? Who would like to share? Go ahead and raise your hand if you would like to share.
Today is a snapshot of what our teachers are working on on a daily basis. There'll be some specific activities for today, but generally, what the teachers are trying to improve and think through actually is the way that their instructional framework looks different in the hybrid model than in the traditional year. So what we're really trying to make is a conscientious effort to not only teach the children that are in front of us, but also connecting with the children at home. It's a task that's obviously very new in this environment, but the teacher's doing an amazing job with it this year.
Transition between the virtual and the in-person is very smooth. We do a lot of collaboration between the two cohorts. So when they're in school, they're also working with the kids that are at home to keep that conversation flowing and the lessons flowing so that we were able to do some new things each day and continue with the learning and the curriculum. And the lessons just run smoothly and coordinate well with both groups. Oh, I like this one. One times nine equals what? Let's see it. Hold it up fast. Nice. My friends at home. Looks good. We're working with multiplication and practicing a lot of different multiplication strategies. So we are doing this project about running a pet shelter, and today, they were working with figuring out these different inventories that the pet shelter would need and using multiplication to figure out the total amount that they have. But I did the introduction of the lesson with the whole group. I have my computer set up so my kids at home can see me as well as my kids in school. And whenever I was done with the whole group lesson, I sent them off for my kids at home in breakout rooms so they could work in partners to complete it. And my friends at school, I put them in partner pairs so that they could work on it too. Go ahead and wave goodbye to your friends on screen. I'm gonna close out the rooms. Today in writing, we're starting a new writing project where the students are working on writing an informational piece. So each of the students spent some time researching on PebbleGo, either a wild weather event or a natural disaster. And their job was to pick four topics of interest. And after all the students were done with their writing, I had the students at home and the students at school join breakout rooms. And then in their breakout rooms, they were mixed with some students from school and some students from home. From home, and then the students had an opportunity to share out their writing. They shared about their four topics of interest for the Wild Weather Project, and then they all had a chance to share about their favorite toys. We like to use the breakout rooms because it gives them a chance to feel like they're together at school. It would be like just how they would be coming together on the carpet. And if we were all in the classroom together, the breakout room is just like that. They get to talk to each other face to face and really build that connection through working and just through conversation.
Can one person make a difference? What are your thoughts about that essential question? Leah? Our shared reading piece today was on the genre of biography, and our essential question that we've been working on in our Wonders curriculum is, can one person make a difference? The kiddos who were in the class today selected their individual this morning that they would like to independently research and present for Black History Month. So our shared reading lesson today from our wonders kind of connected the idea of biographies. So we've been talking a lot about what biographies are and how they give us a lot of important information, and also leading into author's point of view, how the author who is writing the text feels about the main idea, the theme of the passage, and their viewpoint on the situation.
Well, we were learning about Judy and what she was going to do, like to fight back about the coal companies poisoning her land. In the beginning, it was a little bit tricky to make sure that all the kids knew about what their responsibilities were. But now that we're in our routine and the kids know that at home, they log on for live lessons and do work by themselves. And now my kids at school, they know what they need to do since I'm able to guide them. I think that we're running pretty smoothly here, and you know, only a few hiccups every now and then.
Prior to getting the webcam and, you know, the tripod and the additional monitor, it was a challenge. So having the webcam and being able to share my screen and post the same lesson for the kids who are asynchronous and the kids who are in the classroom has been extremely beneficial. It's been beneficial in a way that we can move through the pacing of the curriculum. We can support students in small groups individually. Students are really getting their needs met, and students are learning how to interact with one another in different situations.
We're turning education on its head to a certain degree, but our teachers are rising to the occasion. They're prioritizing relationships and community building over anything else, which is just phenomenal. And then getting to the instruction as well, and what they're producing is quite remarkable.
Okay. And that is all we have for you today. So thank you so much for inviting us to speak. We really enjoyed getting to show you what Blair Mill is doing and how awesome our community is.
Thank you. Thank you for both of those presentations today. Now we move on to Dr. Everslog.
Thank you, Madam President, and start by thanking our our teachers from KV and Blair Mill for sharing your your expertise and bringing us into your your experience and just continuing to be impressed by how you are flexibly growing and trying to find ways to help our students. So thank you. We really appreciate you sharing that. So I'm going to transition to a presentation. I'm going to share my screen here. Is that viewable there?
Yep, looks good from here.
All right. So thank you. Thank you all for joining us this evening. We're going to be bringing you into a little bit of where we are in our past to a full return and just thinking about our instructional models and what's next. It has certainly been a year where the path has been sometimes hard to see the end, hard to see what's next. And that's been a challenge for all of us. And so just wanted to take you into where we are in our planning, where we think it makes sense to go next, and what are what it looks like on a both short and long-term, long-term basis. So today, I'm going to take us through our objective and a little bit of timeline and just give us an update on our current situation. There's been some recent and evolving guidance that I'd like to share, as well as some an update on our public health data and some local district data, and then talk about what some of those next steps for return would be. So our objective, and I thought it would be valuable to just take a look at this, and I don't, I think it seems pretty obvious, but as as we have had differing perspectives on how we're going to get there, I do think this is a shared goal. It's a shared goal for all of us that we want students to be returning in-person instruction. We want them to do that, do so safely. We certainly want to do so equitably. And so I do think that's a shared expectation for all of us, and we want to keep our eyes on the prize there and try to get there. So I'll take us through a little bit of where we have been first. The, starting in October, we returned our kindergarten students to in-person instruction five days a week. Prior to that, we had we had returned some students with some special needs and have continued throughout this timeline to return students with some special needs at a little bit greater level of frequency, sometimes more days than the other hybrid students, and that's based on the student need. Our hybrid in-person programming began on November 5th. And then we're some rapid changes with the school district and Montgomery County as a whole entering into what is determined to be the substantial range. And then on the 13th, as you recall, the Monaco Board of Health ordered schools to go fully virtual effective November 23rd. And there were some changing guidance also on the 23rd for what that meant for substantial range. We returned to a hybrid program on January 11th for students in person. Grades one through 12 and kindergarten resumed their five-days-a-week instruction, and we have been And we have been in that model ever since. Since then, there has been guidance that we followed that has been evolving rapidly. And I want to take you into that, that guidance and how, how its evolution is really changing and give you some examples of how it's, how that changing guidance is impacting the practical nature of this. As we've said from the beginning, we're going to monitor and follow recommendations and guidance from the state and federal government as well as the Montgomery County Office of Public Health. They have been active partners through this process and a good voice to not only hear from, but to bounce ideas off of and help work through difficult situations. And we want to work with the Office of Public Health to determine the extent to which students can safely return. I can tell you that in our regular meetings with them and with doctors, they want that same goal. They want that to happen as quickly as possible. But we of course acknowledge that the guidance is fluid. It flows from the federal level to local level and evolves over time. There were some CDC guidance that came out this weekend. I will speak to that a little bit. But just as far as the flow of guidance would go, that process would be the state, the Pennsylvania Department of Health and the Office of Public Health in Montgomery County would interpret that guidance and apply it to some local guidelines that hasn't yet come out since, in a response to the recent CDC guidance, but we would expect that soon. There are some aspects of the guidance that haven't evolved as much, others have. And I want to give you some examples of how, how rapidly this changes and some examples of how it has changed. Travel quarantine requirements have changed several times. They're changing regularly and we can anticipate them changing again in the near future. There's been some good, an important movement around the necessity and length of quarantines needed for vaccinated individuals. This is an example of how guidance could change and really impact our daily functioning as a school. So just recently, prior to that change, an individual who was quarantined and even if they had been vaccinated, still need, I'm sorry, an individual who was a close contact who had been vaccinated, still was required to quarantine for the same duration of time. That, as they learn more and more about the effectiveness of the vaccine, has now been, that requirement has been lifted. So if someone is vaccinated and they're a close contact, there are steps they have to take, but it does not include a lengthy quarantine as it had been. That obviously is an important factor in getting kids and adults back in the school and back in the workplace. There's been length of quarantines that have changed and differentiated based on exposures to the variants. We know that the aspects of the many different variants that have come out have now been, have changed some of the guidance. So that's added the complication, but also an example of change. There's some recent guidance and we hope to grow with this guidance of how students or staff member could test out of a quarantine. As you know, we've been talking about our own mitigation strategies and testing locally. And there's been some changing guidance around how a student may, if they're quarantined, for example, but asymptomatic, how a negative test could reduce that quarantine and allow a student to resume quicker. Very important, again, another strategy to get students back in place. And there's been some recent strengthening of the mitigation strategies. I'm going to speak to those throughout the presentation, which impact the recommendations. And then specifically we see in the CDC guidance that we saw over the weekend. And the PD guidance on instructional models has also changed and I'll speak to that as well. So let me talk to a little bit about the CDC guidance that was released on the 12th. Obviously with any new guidance, we go through the process of interpreting it and trying to apply it to the best sense and wait for some local direction as well. But there are some key aspects of this that I found to be very promising. There's some clarity around certain issues and some additional leeway that I believe offers some flexibility or some other, under some other conditions. There is a priority for K-12 schools. They're prioritized in the CDC guidance as the last sentence to close. After all, the mitigation measures in the community have been employed and the first reopen when they can do so safely. So there's just an emphasis and statement of assertion for the importance of that. There is an emphasis to determine when and how schools reopen safely starts with, you know, assessing levels of community spread. That's consistent with what we have done. We have been monitoring levels of community spread, both in the municipality and the county. We've been posting that to our website weekly. And those impact as far as the presence of the virus in the community. There's some revised metrics. There are now four levels of the community spread and, and some different guidance based on the instructional models connected with those levels that are also related to the mitigation strategies. And I'll speak to that momentarily. There's an emphasis on the vaccine for everyone. As we've stated multiple times, we want to work with all of our stakeholders, our, our families, our students, our staff members to get vaccinated as quickly as possible. We'll work with all of them to do so. The CDC did prioritize educators as a, as a group that does need to be vaccinated, but also does not deem the vaccination of the staff to be a required condition for in-person instruction. It hasn't been the case here. Our staff is in person. They're here. They're delivering in-person instruction now, so we haven't used that as a condition for return. But it's good to hear that emphasis by the CDC. We of course are hoping that the speed of the vaccination at the local and state level increases. That's something that's important for the community and for all of us. But that CDC emphasis was again important. And another factor that is really highlighted through this is the impact of the expanded screening testing systems and really encouraging school districts to work on building and growing their mitigation strategies around testing students and staff. And I'm happy we're at the forefront of this. We were the third of the Montgomery County School Districts to involve with our testing program. We're now in week five or six of this program for staff, which has helped and is growing by, by the week. But we also are working with CHOP directly on how this program could greatly grow and thus also help us in getting kids back in person. So the mitigation strategies that are highlighted from the CDC, some of those have remained pretty consistent. These in the top are pretty consistent. There has been some application and implementation that's evolved around like masking, for example. You know, there's now some recent talk of the effectiveness of double masking and what impact that would have. And if that has an impact on, on the need to distance, all of those are questions that are not yet answered. But there is some, there is some work and research around that, that would allow how, to how we look at our mitigation strategies and how effectively we look at our mitigation strategies to impact students returning. And just so you know, we continue to prioritize and revisit each of these strategies, not just keep them as is. You know, we've done some really nice steps with our facilities and cleaning and ventilation and our bipolar ionization project, which is entering into the buildings, which has improved some of the air quality in the buildings, something that was taking some time, energy and resources, but is well spent as a recommended mitigation strategy. But these, these mitigation strategies at the bottom, the diagnostic testing and the screening testing are things that would really have emerged and you see really emphasized in the new CDC guidance. We are in this phase right here of screening testing, screen, screening testing. We've, we do routine screening of our asymptomatic staff. We have not begun with students. When we do begin, we of course will ensure that parents have communication around that and that only students would be tested with parent consent, of course. That would not be something we would proceed without parent consent. But it is viewed as a really important mitigation strategy that can help us move forward. So some of the indicators and thresholds for the community transmission that were monitored, there's four categories. The color-coded are high, substantial, moderate and low. And for each of these, you can see where Montgomery County is. We are currently still in the high range, but this, these numbers in both these categories are really decreasing rapidly. It is really good news for the rate at which there is a decline. Just a couple of weeks ago, we were in the high transmission as far as positivity rates. We are now in the five to 7.9 range. And there is reason to believe we could be as low as in the sixes this week. Get that data will come out this week, which will be again, another step that's important. CDC does say if there's two indicators that suggest different levels, the actions corresponding to the higher threshold should be given. So we would be operating still under the high transmission rate. But again, this is getting closer to, to this range as well. And I'll share some, some numbers around that as well. And then there are two, these next two slides are two different thresholds of guidance for the CDC based on whether schools that do not implement expanded screening testing and those that do. So these really indicate the value that the CDC has placed on the screening testing as a mitigation strategy. Because there are stark differences between the recommendations for schools that do not have any screening testing and those that do. But you can see as schools that are in the high and substantial range, there is some differentiating language in the guidance that was not there previously. This love, this language does provide a little more clarity. As far as physical distancing, it, it's really requiring it six feet or more distance as we're in the higher substantial range. And then as you transition to moderate, there is language about the greatest extent possible. And we're expecting some greater clarity around this greatest extent possible. But I view this as, as, as an opportunity that, that, that did differentiate this type of language to say that there are conditions under which there can be, students can return safely with less than six feet with proper, with proper context around other mitigation strategies and, and within certain realm of community spread. Again, we're not there yet. We're here. I don't want to, I don't want to be dilute the fact that we are, we're here now. We're still in the high range. We're still operating under these set of guidelines. But, but there is a path here. There is a path to, to being in the moderate and low range within a timeframe that's, that's reasonable. This was the, the second slide I was referencing. This is for a difference for schools that do implement a screen, a screening tested method. Basically, the major difference here is that while the, in the other, if without testing, it really said that secondary schools should be remote. But here really it says K-12 schools are hybrid and it's a pretty big difference just by screening, just by implementing that one mitigation strategy. So it spoke to the value that they've placed for that strategy and the need, the emphasis to grow that. So this is an example of, of guidance that has also evolved. But we also expect there to be some soon to be revisions to this. We hope to get an update on this as early as this week or next week, what this could mean. This, this chart was released in, at the end of July. So it was a while ago. With as far as you think of the, the growth and evolution of this process, there had been one major revision that added this blended learning differentiation for elementary students in, on January 7th. But you can see where we have been ever since this guidance was released. The, the county started in the moderate range, has never reached the low range, but has been in the substantial range since November 9th. And again, we're getting closer to moving in the moderate range. But you know, this revised guidance here reflected some language from the CDC. And we hope that, that if there's revisions in this place as well, it will also speak to that. We have been following and operating within these guidelines since, since July within the, within the framework that they've, that they've put forth. The revision that they had in November allowed for, through the attestation for students to return. This had fully remote learning. That's what it was before January 7th. But it did allow for the conditions for students to return with the signing of the attestation form. And I'm just going to talk briefly about that because there's been some confusion around this. The attestation form, and we've seen this visual before. But the attestation form basically attested, we as a district attested to ensuring that we would only keep our schools open if there was a level of spread or presence, I should say, not necessarily spread, but presence in the building of the virus within certain ranges. And if it exceeded that, those thresholds, we would close the buildings. So I wanted to speak to one point as far as clarification of how this is interpreted because there's been several questions around this. As a small school, and we have three schools that are a small school. And I'll use today as an example. We came off a, a four-day extended weekend. All of our counts were at zero as we returned because we did have in essence a three-day closure. So if there were, there weren't any cases today in the building thankfully, so that's, this is only a hypothetical scenario. But if in one of these buildings, there were up to two, but no more than four cases, then we would have to close for three days. So if we had two cases, we closed for three days. If there are three or four in the same day, we would close for three days. This is not, this is not a range that say you can go up to four and then decide. You have to transition to a three-day closure of the billing once you've reached the second case. So the question is, when would you reach this, this threshold? And that would be if you had in a single day, for example, if today in one of our small buildings, we had five or more cases, that would be concerning because there was that much presence of the virus that quickly. And that would prompt a 14-day closure. We haven't been there. We hopefully won't go there. But I did want to point out that differentiation. We are operating under this. We do not have any leeway at this point to, to not follow this guidance. This is not, this is, this is a requirement to which we attested that we must follow if we're open until, unless there is a change in the guidance. And one of the thoughts is that perhaps if we move to a lower level of community transmission, that this would no longer be as necessary. But at this point, we're operating with, under the assumption that this is in place. So with that, we've been looking at a lot of data that provides us with some context. We look at Montgomery County municipality data on incident rates and the positivity rates. We apply those rates to what we did apply to the PD Department of Public Health metrics. And now recently the CDC metrics, which we can look at as well. We, we look at on a day-to-day basis, our local district data and case counts to assess functionality. You know, unfortunately, the, you as a community have felt some of this because while we've had case counts that have not required a billing to be closed, we have had some functional departments and aspects of our, of our program that have had to be, had some interruption of service, namely the transportation and the, and food service. And I just want to, you know, thank our community for the incredible response that they've had and understanding of the interruption of the transportation service. Our families are really terrific with getting kids to school and helping us with that in the time through that, through that interruption. So we're thankful for that. But we're literally assessing functionality on a day-to-day basis, not only in transportation, but each program. Because quarantines really impact functionality every bit as much as positive cases. Those are clearly related, but quarantines are much more, obviously have a functional impact. We're monitoring vaccination progress. We obviously want to not only numbers to, to go up as far as people being vaccinated, but societally, where are we as far as moving towards herd immunity? What does that mean? What, when we get to community, community rates of vaccination? What does that mean for the broader guidance in society, but also more particularly for schools? And an increasing knowledge of the effectiveness of the vaccine. We're hearing that regularly and that's impacting. some of this guidance. And you know, I've spoken to this before earlier, but the, the, the rapid antigen testing program, the growth of this is been highlighted more, more and emphasized more importantly than ever. So we're really trying to ramp that up. And again, that takes resources and time. But to, to get that to a point where we can, where we can move into testing of students and staff a little more systematically and rapidly. So just take a quick peek into our local data, both at the county and the borough and township levels. We have, this is the data that we've been monitoring regularly. I have shown this before, this is posted on the website. But you can see some real positive trends in this data. You know, we're at numbers here with our positivity rates and our incident rates that we were not this low since, since before Halloween. So that's a, that's a really great time when I, when I, when I shared with you last board meeting, we're at numbers that were you know, that we hadn't been in, you know, four to six weeks. And here we are beyond now to Halloween, it's a growing quickly and, and, and moving in the direction that we, that we had hoped. Again, we have, we're optimistic that perhaps this number could be in the sixes this week, which would be a great, a great step for us. And just to kind of show you what that looks like visually with the incident rates. As far as this is the PDE metric, so how we apply these to the PDE metric of having the categories of substantial, moderate and low. Again, you can see where we are here, even though the last two weeks have been relatively the same, we hope that that drops as well, but we're at numbers that we were at right here in the middle, near the end of October, obviously at this beginning. If this could continue to decrease and get us in the moderate and hopefully low range, that would be, that would be promising. One of the concerns here with the, with the PDE metric is that we, we've never been in the low range. We started even in, you know, in the summer and then through start of the year and in this moderate range, which we lived kind of in until, until right around that Halloween time, which we went right after that to spike to the substantial. But if you look at the CDC metrics that were just released, you can see a difference here, same obviously, same data, but just overlaid on a different metric. And you can see a path to moderate, which numbers where we, where we had been in early October and September. And getting there, like I said earlier, has some differentiation of some language around the six feet. And that, you know, that provides us with, I think, some hope of some increased flexibility in that, in that range. So and, and how long will it take us to get the moderate? You know, obviously that based on how quickly this number continues to drop, which I imagine, you know, is based on a lot of other community metrics. But we hope that, that, that trend line certainly continues along the way. Looking at the positivity rates, again, you can see generally the same type of trend going up and then going down. Again, similar to where we were in October. There, here we have for both CDC and NPDE, we have a target of, of less than five percent. But again, getting less than five percent, we have been there and we can get there. So you know, again, we're optimistic that that we're on, we're on a path to, to get to, to get to that point. And just as a point of reference, one of the nuances that was referenced recently with the especially with the CDC guidance is to look at some local data in the municipality, not only at the county level. We do have some municipalities in Montgomery County who are already below five percent. We are not one of them yet, but hope to be. So I would hope that as a community, we would always want this orange line to be lower than the Montgomery County line. That will only help us if we can, as we had been here these last couple of weeks, continue to be lower. That will help us, that will help us. There are other municipalities in the county that are far above the county line, and that's problematic for them and will, you know, will of course impact their, their timeline as well. So again, some positive outlook on some of the, the local metrics. And positivity rates and incident rates that we've been monitoring. So I want to take a little bit of, of peek and clarity into the dashboard. I don't want to take too much time on this, but I do want, there's been several questions around this. And you know, I just wanna, I just want to emphasize that we have in, in my mind, adopted as transparent a process as possible. As far as our communication with families around cases, both by the dashboard and by letters, we, we, as you know, as parents, we've sent a high volume of letters. And we send a letter when there's a case and we want to inform form the families that there is a case and that in, if you were indeed your child was indeed a close contact, there would be a secondary communication around that. But we didn't want any accusations or of us not being, sharing the presence of, of cases. And so we, we've, we've taken that approach. I know we've had some concerns voiced about the volume of letters. You know, I certainly don't want to inundate folks with communication that's, that's unnecessary, but I, I do, I'd rather in this, in this, in, in this situation, over communicate rather than under. So that's been our stance through this. But there's a difference and it's some questions about why the volume allows doesn't always match up with the dashboard. And so I just want to encourage folks to read, if you're looking at the dashboard and that's an area of concern, to look at some of the fine print below that kind of explains what is reflected on the dashboard. Positive cases that are reflected are only cases that, that we're aware of, that, that of, of individuals that would impact the, the building closure. So if it was a student that was fully remote and never been in the building or a case at the bus garage, for example, those cases we would communicate around, but we, they wouldn't be reflected in the district, in the positive cases on the dashboard. A quarantine number is an important number to look at for, to determine our, our functionality. This is a snapshot from late last week. You know, with our staff, you know, we're operating at forty five staff members down. That impacted transportation and impacted food service. Again, kudos to a lot of our staff who willing to put on a hat that they don't typically wear to try to get food delivered and, and kids transported and you know, I just appreciate that and I appreciate the understanding and flexibility around that. But we, we wanted to inform the, the community around what that impact could be. And that's a good indicator of maybe if there's, if we're on the verge of some functional or interruption of service. Again, this is a snapshot from late last week. You can see the dashboard today. That's up on the, up on the website. It's updated every day at four o'clock. And this is how many new quarantines we get. Every day we have people that go into quarantine, people that come out of quarantine. So this is a rolling number, but you can see some days about the forty people that might have entered quarantine. Recently, that number is a little lower thankfully, and we hope that that's reflective of some of the community wide numbers going down. And then the closure gauges again are just indicators of where we are in relationship to a school closure of individuals who have been onsite and a positive case within that fourteen day rolling window. And again, so each building has the number of cases, if you look at it this afternoon, all of them, all the cases are at zero, because we had a reset over the weekend with the four days and closing the buildings for four days. But they, there were no additional cases today, which was, which we're thankful. But every day you can see how close we are maybe to a potential building closure. And to give you a sense of what that's looked like, since we've started tracking cases since the beginning of the year. This is data through the eleventh, but obviously changes daily. We've dealt with this, you know, a hundred fifty five positive cases in students, seventy four positive cases in staff. So that's obviously a higher rate for staff than it is for students. Six, six hundred and sixty eight quarantines of students, two hundred and twenty seven with staff. Just to give you a sense of, of the, the volume that we've dealt with. And the community is dealing with. But sixty eight percent of those cases have been occurred since the beginning of December. So that's been, you know, a recent spike. And again, we hope that that number declined. All that said, you know, we're thankful that's only evolved into, you know, two days of a school being closed. Two elementary schools were closed and only one of those impacted instructional day. Unfortunately, Blair Mill had one day that had a transition to fully virtual. And we were helped by this for the, the snow day weekend and the President's Day weekend, which we, we're going into that snow day, that snow weekend. We had a couple of buildings that were on the brink. So thankfully with the reset, they did not need to close. But again, this is all operated under the attestation that we formed. So that's the local data that we've had, but also want to give you a snapshot of where we are attendance wise in enrollment, because this is really impactful for how local, local districts are looking at their own data and their own situation and exploring options for their districts. I know there have been several questions about neighboring districts doing X. I've heard this district has done this and why can't we do this? And those are good questions and I, and I expect you to ask them and I expect you, you can expect answers from us on that. There isn't necessarily a single, a single quick answer to that. I will say a couple of general things. One is that there is different guidance coming out of the Bucks County Department of Health and the Montgomery County Department of Health. That's, I'm saying that as a statement of fact. I'm not judging anything that's happening in Bucks County. It is different guidance. And due to our geographic proximity, we know that that has created some confusion for our families. You know, we obviously operate under the Montgomery County Office of Public Health. They are our guide. And so the, we are operating under their guidance, which has stayed very true to the six feet guidance. And very strong in their recommendation about maintaining six feet as a, as a recommended distance. Not only for, for keeping individuals apart when they're in buildings and on, on buses and playgrounds, but also for close contacts. And so that six feet is an important number for close contacts. And so operating under those guidelines of six feet has asked, you know, challenged each district to be able to interpret that differently. And, and well, not differently, under their own particular circumstances. And I want to talk about ours. These are ele- elementary numbers. There are currently seventy six percent of our elementary students K through five who have opted for the hybrid program and are coming to school in person. That's a high percentage, twenty four percent, obviously in, in virtual. Of those seventy six percent, a very high percentage of them are coming to school every day. In other words, the days that we're expecting them, they're coming in. This number actually would be higher, had it not been for the, some of the transportation hiatus, which lowered our numbers for a few days understandably. They're still high thankfully, but they were, but our numbers in, in general, kids are coming to school on the days they should be. And, and we're maximizing the space that we have to do so. So you know, a question has been raised is, you know, why can't we ask students who want to come into school five days a week, if they'd be willing to come in for five days a week and and even if that would sacrifice six feet of, of, of distancing. And you know, a, an answer to that, that I think is i- important on a number of different levels. And I'll take even the factor out of it about us going against the guidance, because in essence, by doing that, you're, 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 you're going against the guidance. And this is one of two things that can happen. You can either return students who want to come back fully and have the space to distance them at, at six feet for the number that want to return. That's what we're doing for kindergarten. So we have the number of students that we can, students in kindergarten who wanted to return, we're able to and able to distance six feet. However, if you look at this seventy six percent, it's, it's not a proper assumption to say that these seventy six percent of students all have the same story. Some of this, these students in the seventy six percent would be willing to come in, their families would be going to come in five days a week, even if that resulted in distancing being less than six feet. There are other families and we've heard those families of, the voices of these families that have voiced the, their, their agreement to come in at six, to come into school for hybrid, knowing that we would be enforcing the mitigation strategies and ensuring them six feet. So if a family is not comfortable with their child being under six feet and being in person, we're leaving those families with a very uncomfortable choice. And you know, some districts have chosen to do this and I'm not, again, I'm not saying anything negative about any other districts they have. But I do not, I'm not comfortable with asking a family who has, who has sent their child to us under certain conditions to then violate those conditions or change them and ask them to make a decision, because those families would be choice, would be tasked with making the difficult choice of either sending their child to school and sacrificing that that six feet of distancing, knowing that their child would not change their teacher, would be able to stay with their, their friends in class, something that would be very compelling for, for them. And they, they would have to stay, they'd be able to stay with their teacher, but to do so, they'd have to, they have to be coming in under six feet. Or if they felt as if they wanted to maintain fully virtual, they, I mean, not come in at six feet, they would have to transition to fully virtual, they'd have to change their teacher. And both of those are clearly decisions that they wouldn't want to make based on their decision to send their child to hybrid, they want in-person instruction. So I'm not saying that we should not explore that. I'm just letting you know that there is a direct impact to families that I feel is, is really unfair to those families to, to put them in a position. And that's aside from the, the fact that we'd be going against the guidance, which we've, we've pledged to follow and, and, and have followed all along. So, and, and, and I want to be very, very truthful, that, that is an option. I mean, some districts have chosen to say we, we are going to send, are going to send students back. And we're not going, but we're not going to follow the, the six feet, we're not, we can't do that. They can certainly have the, the prerogative to do so. We have not done so at this point. So these are our, our numbers at the elementary level. Transitioning to the secondary level. A secondary level, again, we have a little bit different numbers, they have a little bit different flow to them. Definitely unique, more unique challenges at the secondary level with students being in multiple classrooms. And being able to plan for distancing for students at the high school, very challenging, because students are in multiple spaces many times throughout the day as they are at the middle school. But we do have a little more, a little more control at the middle school with how, how students are going to be spaced and kids are a little bit smaller, quite honestly, at the middle school than they are at the high school, which does impact the distancing as well. Again, high attendance still of those expected to be in person at the, at the in-person level at both high school and secondary. Again, these numbers dipped a little bit since the transportation. But one of, you know, a, a story of a local district was that their attendance rates were very low. They were not getting students to come to school, even those that had been in place and they felt comfortable offering students in person. They offered students K to twelve, five days a week of instruction. But their interest level of those taking them up and that was not more than fifty percent of the students. So they were able to, they were able to ensure distancing. In fact, in some areas, far lower than fifty percent. They were able to say we can distance six feet and still bring students back. Which philosophically I'm aligned with. I want to bring students back to the extent we can and follow the guidelines. Many of the guidelines are changing, that distancing parameter has not changed yet, but as I referenced with the CDC, there is, there is some language that may lead us to believe that there could be some flexibility as we get to that phase with public data. So just a couple of comments around the vaccine progress, because that's also, it's also an important factor. We have currently, we're still in the one A category. And I want to make a point about this, because there's been some questions around Philadelphia as opposed to what's happening in Philadelphia, what's happening in county and other counties. Philadelphia has its own Department of Health that has its own categories of vaccinations, one A, one B, they have their, they have the ability to do so themselves. The other counties in the state follow the Pennsylvania Department of Health. And so all the other counties are in the same spot as far as one A, one B, we're still in the one A, one A category. One A phased, I should say. Hope to be so as, as quickly as possible into one B, so that our first responders as well as our, our employees and workers who care for kids and others that are important to, 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 to us, us moving forward more opening, a, a societally are also vaccinated. But there still are a lot of people in the one A category, the in Montgomery County who are not vaccinated. So the The in Montgomery County who are not vaccinated. Um, so, um, the pace at which we are getting, um, the vaccine is. Not what we'd hoped and I'm not saying that in any critical way to the county, if the county is doing what they can with the doses that they're getting. But this week, for example, they got three thousand doses. That's not enough to get us through the one A category into speed, which would, uh, move us at a pace that all of us, I think, would like to. To move on to our, um, other, the rest of, the rest of those who need, need vaccinated vaccinations. At this point, we do have a, a small percentage of our staff who are in the one cat, one A category. And some of our teachers who work with, uh, certain populations are in the one A category and have, uh, received vaccination. In fact, this week is, um, several of them are getting the second dosage. Which, um, has, has been slightly, slightly impactful based on the reaction of, of, of the sec, of the second dose. That said, that said, um, this is information that shared. This is straight from the, the county's website, but they have these updates regularly. It happens to be the one from, from February third. But you can see that, um, you know, as of February third, there were still, you know, roughly two hundred fifty thousand people. That's still needed to be vaccinated in one A. And if we're getting three thousand doses a week, that's not moving us to where we would like to be. At the pace. Now that said, there's, there's optimism around, uh, the production of vaccine increasing and the, and the supply increasing. That again, that's not something we can control. We're not leading that as a, as a, uh, condition under which we want, uh, we want the next phase to occur. But it certainly helps and we want to do everything we can to support our employees and those, um, who need to be vaccinated. To do so as quickly as possible. Excuse me. So moving along, as far as what our path is, um, I talked to you a little bit about some of the changing, uh, the changing guidance. We obviously want to balance our objective, um, with that guidance. Uh, we do want to return students as safely and equally as possible. I did share with you some of the assertions of the importance of opening schools, uh, but, but while still maintaining, um, some of the guidance that we're operating under. I talked at the last meeting around this about some expectation that we, um, that this is not going to be a quick switch. And that there is some incremental, um, transition to this and expect some programming changes, uh, to be incremental and our recommendations incremental. That would align with the guidance. Uh, sometimes if guidance were to switch quickly, um, the speed of which we could change could also change. But right now we're operating incrementally and we've talked about, um, the need to prioritize both our youngest learners. And support them in person to the great extent as possible. And, uh, you know, look at what we can do to use our calendar days to maximize in-person instructional time. We also want to, um, as an instructional goal, continue our growth and improvement in how we're effectively instructing students who may not be in front of us. Yes, we want more students in front of us, um, but, um, those who are at home, whether you're in the at-home cohort or operating in the Hatter Academy or virtually. We want, um, the learning to be maximized in those venues as well. So that, that continues to be a priority, uh, that we will focus on. So with that, we'll bring forward the two recommendations, uh, for action items for consideration, uh, this evening. These will be, um, uh, brought upon and action in the, uh, superintendent's report, uh, at the, um, middle end of the meeting. As far as when that, the action will be called upon for, for voting. But we'll allow some, of course, some public comment and questions about this, um, moving forward. But our first recommendation is that the, you know, administration is recommending that we transition to using five days of, of. Uh, a week of in-person instruction for first graders, um, in all schools. So much like, uh, we are doing it for kindergarten, uh, we'd like to bring all of our first graders, um, back, um, in person. Um, and we can do that, um, with the, the six feet guidance, um, that we've had and, you know. Question that would go along with that is why now? Why couldn't we do that earlier? There's a lot of reasons for that. Um, one is some enrollment shifts and availability, um, that for us to now be able to do that. Across all buildings. And also a repurposing of a lot of space. You know, as we transition more students back, uh, much like we did with kindergarten, we had to move our kindergarten classrooms to some various spaces. In, in, uh, the building and look at some general areas. So we're going to need to do that with, uh, first graders as well. I'll talk to them in just a minute. The other recommendation is that we begin using Mondays as a fifth in-person instructional day. Where we're not just instructing students in person four days a week, uh, but adding that Monday to the rotation. By alternating our cohorts, uh, for Mondays, um, for grades two to twelve, uh, beginning March eighth. Two to twelve would be assuming that we're bringing the kindergartners, I mean, the kindergartners and first graders back, uh, for five days a week. So just talking about each of these a little bit more in depth. So returning the first grade students in person, uh, five days a week. There were a lot of accommodations that we need, um, to, um, to do for space. And this is looking at every classroom, every space, every elementary school. So we involve some adjustment for multiple grades, including, um, including. Looking at using kindergarten space and repurposing some other, um, instructional areas like our LGIs or some special area spaces. Cafeterias and other classroom spaces. Uh, so in some cases, we'll need to have our first graders. Span one class across two classrooms. In certain buildings, um, which would require some additional staffing allocations to make sure that we have adequate supervision of both. And the teacher will be working with both, both classes, um, in, in person. So to do so, we will need to, assuming this, uh, recommendation passes. If it were to pass, we will, we will, um, begin tomorrow, uh, with assessing first grade interest. And, you know, I want to say that we were optimistic that we'll be able to do this. Obviously it's hard to fully predict what that could be for every family involved in their level of interest. Uh, we will ask our Hatter Academy students if they would be interested in the full, in a full return, um, to first grade. Knowing that doing so would result in, um, them having to change teacher would be, it would be a teacher change, which we know would be. You know, a challenging switch for a first grader at this point of the year, but it is something we will assess, um, through a questionnaire. Uh, of our, of our first grade families, um, our hybrid students, we would ask them, um, again, if they'd want to continue in the five-day program. Doing so, they would remain with their teachers, their current teachers and remain with their current classmates. And I just want to say that, you know, our placement preferences, like, for families, we, we obviously want to meet our families' preferences to the extent we can. I, I can't fully guarantee until we get all the responses a- a- assessed and returned, that we would definitely be able to meet every need. For example, if there was a high percentage of Hatter Academy students who wanted to return in person at this point. It could create some, um, problematic, you know, problematic spacing constraints, uh, for that. But, um, you know, we are optimists that we can do, that we can do so and we will assess, uh, families about their interest level. About that, uh, beginning tomorrow. There'll also be some questions, uh, of some information communication around all of our Hatter Academy families, just around their. Their, um, interests would, we, we, we asked them at the beginning of the year if they were, if they're, we asked them to commit to the first two trimesters. Of the Hatter Academy, knowing that we would be assessing along the way. So we just want to push out some communication to the, our Hatter Academy families as well. To follow up on where they stand with that, um, based on, based on their preferred, uh, placement. So the second recommendation about repurposing Mondays, uh, we would maintain, uh, again, if this were to pass, we would maintain. The cohort schedule for our hybrid students in grade two through twelve, Tuesday through Friday. Um, and then balance the days by starting with the cohorts, um, cohort B, which cohort B has been in. One fewer day than the cohort A so far. So we, by starting with cohort B, we would, um, balance that out. And then alternating on Mondays. Um, just, I'll show you what that looks like visually in a moment, but, um. We're choosing to maintain this, try to keep, uh, families, uh, plans of Tuesday through Friday consistent with whatever. Family arrangements they would have preferable to like a day-to-day rotation where one, it would always be A B, A B rotation. That would be a different Monday, Wednesday, Friday, um, format for families if we, excuse me, if we were to choose that option. So what that looks like visually, um, currently we have, um, our currently scheduled cohort rotation for students in person for one through twelve. Looks like this with A B, this happens to be March, um, that's the rotation currently for A B. Like I said, cohort A has been in one additional day. Uh, so we would just basically, that would stay the same and we would rotate in our Mondays. Beginning on cohort, on, on the eighth with, um, the Mondays rotating B A. With cohort B going first. So if that, if that sounded confusing, we'll try to make sure we can communicate that to families as clearly as possible. But you can see by doing that, all of this stays the same, but some weeks, like this week, you'd have a day when the cohort A would come in. Back-to-back days. And then the following week cohort B would come in three days, but they'd be alternating days. So, um, we thought that was less intrusive, um, to, to families, uh, with that. So finally, um, with that, we also have some administrative action steps in our planning, um, that we will continue. We of course are going to monitor, um, quickly evolving projections, both about the virus and the guidance. To assess the timing of what realistic next incremental steps would be. You know, I'm quite, I, there's no end date to the proposal. The proposal would be, that would be the next incremental step until, uh, we have another one. Um, I know that, uh, frequent change is, is challenging for folks. I mean, the, the very nature of it being incremental, obviously would be more frequent and smaller changes. Um, I know that doesn't meet everyone's expectation or goal of having a quick switch for all. But we feel, we feel like that's the guidance that we've, we've heard as well as, as the, as the virus evolves. And if it changes, uh, the guidance will be incremental and your programming should be incremental. We're also planning for end of the year and spring activities, uh, to ensure there are students can partake, can partake. And we want those ceremonial and celebratory experiences for students to be able to move forward to the extent they can. We know they're important for kids. And we want kids to have those. Certainly there may be some modifications to those. This is an example, um, of, of how an increased antigen testing program. Can, um, allow for some of these activities to occur. Um, and some of the guidance for how to hold proms, for example, goes right along with what kind of testing program you have for students. And so that, you know, those, those two go hand in hand, but, um, I think the community needs to know, um, that we have. Our building administrators or district administrators, you know, thinking about those experiences that are really important for kids. We know it's been a year that they're, they haven't experienced, uh, as much, um, normalcy as we would like. But, uh, as resilient that they've been, we want them to have some of those, um, those meaningful experiences. We're going to further work on growing our, our testing program. There's, we have little, uh, multiple week meetings a week on this. Try to grow the program. Again, that will take additional, uh, resources to do so, but we are confident we are able to get the tests. Without a cost to the district, the test and the supply of the tests, uh, we're optimistic that we can get those without, um, without challenges. From that end and without cost to, to that end. And we obviously want to balance short-term and long-term planning. So we're looking at, yes, what's next, but also what's, what's down the line? And what does a summer look like? What does, uh, what does fall look like? Those are all parts, part of our long-term planning as well. Uh, you know, we've heard some, again, optimistic modeling around. You know, fall and summer looking a lot closer to, um, to normal and that's, that's, um, that's, that's good news. So again, if there's, we continue to trend in that direction, we certainly hope that that, that is, that is the case. But sooner as well. And then we're, you know, we're going to be addressing options for additional academic support opportunities, uh, for our students. There've been a lot of questions around, um, and concerns understandably around, uh, student learning. Where the students are learning at, um, at a level that, um, that, that, uh, we would expect or that, um. Would be expected by, by others. Um, and so, you know, we will be formally addressing that through our work with the, um. Curriculum committee and, uh, presenting on, um, some, uh, opportunities for looking at, um. Learning loss both, both nationally, locally, uh, and looking at some, uh, some of those concerns. And how we are addressing some of those concerns with some additional academic, academic support opportunities, uh, for our students. In the time, in the time being. So with that, um, that concludes my, um, my report and I'm happy to take any questions from my members of the board.
Tara, go ahead.
Tara, I think you're on mute.
Tara, you're on mute.
You're right. I'm sorry. Um, sorry about that. Um, and thank you for everyone letting me know. I, I had a concern with the, with where we are with the, the hybrid. And, uh, all due respect to Dr. Evansledge, I understand that it would be problematic for some to convert. They don't want to like be less than six feet, but it's a hardship for everybody. There are so many that. Want to be in school with i- in front of the teacher that stayed full virtual for one reason or another. Only because maybe the chaos of back and forth, the, the kids were uncomfortable just being only the one kid left there. They want to be back in school. I feel that if we are going to not move forward because of some, which we don't even have a percentage without a survey or a questionnaire yet. Of hybrid people, families that would choose to go full virtual and not full in school. Versus how many are full virtual and would go full-time in school. They, they, they can't be ignored. The moving forward is to get to, in my opinion, full-time, even if it's four days a week and one deep clean day. Uh, I, I, I don't think. Somebody doesn't want to switch teachers. I, I know we've all heard from so many families. That are, whether they're hybrid or full virtual, they are willing to switch teachers. They'd switch buildings if they could to be in school full-time. I don't think we can decide to. Wait to see because of the six-foot thing. Maybe we need a questionnaire, not saying survey, questionnaire, no promises. We need to assess. But it affects a lot of people, not just those in hybrid that would only do it under the rules now. All these rules are constantly changing. CDC just changed them. We cannot overlook the ones that need full-time in-school education, whether it be socially, mentally, academically. Those are just my thoughts. Thank you.
Sure. And thank you for the question. I mean, just, just to be clear, uh, that if seventy-six percent of the elementary students. Were to tell us that they'd want to return five days, then we, if we, if we were to meet that, not, uh. Not only would we, we would, um, would we, um. Not meet the, those needs of that small group that didn't want to change their teacher, but we'd be bringing students back at, at far fewer, far less than six feet. I mean, seventy-six percent of your kids is bringing them back much less than six feet distancing.
I understand that, but we do have other schools in Montgomery County that are successfully doing that. It was explained to me by one of them, they called it the Swiss cheese effect, that, you know, if you only have three or four feet, you know, there's holes in that. Then you have the, the plexiglass, which is another piece of Swiss cheese, which covers the holes. There's other things that we can do. Without that six feet, because I, I know we have schools that we can't do it. Or if we have that many families that truly trust us to bring their kids back to school or their kids need it, that we can't do that six feet. But I don't think it should be taken off the table. It's been almost a year. And how many times are we told we need to learn to live with it? We need to go forward. I, I feel if we don't look towards that, we're not moving forward. My opinion. Thank you.
Say Gemma's question?
Yeah, it's Reinhold. Go ahead.
Scott, and ju- just a, and it's kind of adding on to what Tara was saying. A couple of the things, like you were saying that you didn't want to put, um, and if I'm misquoting you, I apologize. You didn't want to put people or families in a situation where they would have to make a difficult choice. I, I think there's been a large number of families that. of families that all they want is a choice. And by eliminating the chance to have a choice, that's not solving it. I I just that that confused me when you said that. So that's one thing. And then the other thing you were saying seventy six percent wanted to go back. And and you you hesitated a little bit, and I don't know if that was because you're saying, I think you mentioned that it would be space requirements. And something that hasn't come up at all, and I know we've had this debate before as a board, and that's the question of Penny Pack. What was the whole point of keeping Penny Pack open? Wasn't it because of this in this potential situation? I that that to me is just it's frustrating and maddening. And then it's just, I I don't understand. And then even when we're just going back to to first grade and we got to wait till March eighth, which is over two weeks away for it to go back full. I I don't understand why we have to wait two weeks. Like even the terrorist point before, it's been it's been over three hundred and forty days since this started with the school closing. And it's been, you know, over a hundred and sixty days since we've been back to school. I I it once we decide on something, I don't understand why it can't be less than two weeks to get it in motion and get it going. And then if we're doing it just first grade, why aren't we doing it K through five? We have the space. That was the penny pack part. We have two brand new schools. I I just I'm having a hard time following why we aren't moving forward. It just feels like we're looking for any reason and and it doesn't reminds me of when we were talking before of a moving target. You know, when I looked at those numbers and I saw where we were and you were saying it was the moderate range back in September in October and, you know, we should have been in. I don't know. That's just some of the thoughts I had.
Well, I mean, I can speak to that a little bit and, you know, one thing that we've we've shared throughout is is that the administration has made recommendations that align with that guidance and that constraint of six feet is has been a driving force to the recommendation. And so, you know, if certainly if you're operating under assumption that you're not going to follow that guidance, your 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 flexibility increases. I mean, that's that goes without saying. But if you are sticking to if you are sticking to six feet, then having having more kids in requires more space. Kindergarten, for example, required more space than kindergarten normally would. First grade, we're taking on more space than first grade normally would. So now of a sudden, we have LGIs, we have these general area spaces that we've taken over because we're bringing back more students under that, under the the under the guidelines of six feet. Again, that that will that will take up only so much space. The decision to leave Penny Pack open. You know, I I don't. I I'm not passing the buck on that. It predated me, quite honestly. But the decision of it was to leave it open, I think, at least offered the flexibility, knowing that we could use the space. We would have to invest money into the facility, which I know we have hesitation in doing. There's there's some facility concerns, obviously, with its condition. But there's also a lot of other concerns with with staffing. I mean, you're talking about staffing. And if you if you split, if you split your your kindergarten into two classes, you need you hire another teacher. I mean, all of that is if if you're following that, if you're following that spacing, so you keep growing your spaces as you're bringing people back. Ultimately, you're you hit a bubble with your with your space allotment.
And just to and and you know what, what you were just saying there about Penny Pack? It's it's very, I don't know what the right word would be funny or ironic. Because that's exactly what we were saying, why it shouldn't have been kept open, because there is no way it was ever going to be used. But that's a whole nother topic that I shouldn't go down that path, but it's it like the whole idea and and if you could mention like, why not just go K through five? Like, I know when we look at you were mentioning it was Bucks County and I'm looking at my notes here that was some of the surrounding counties and its different roles are. I I know that there's counties that are it are school districts in Montgomery County that are that are right around us that are able to make it work. And and not only that, like, we're talking, you know, there has been schools able to make it work. Public, private, whatever you want to say, and and the transmission rates are not going up. Schools are not. If someone can show me how their super spreaders, I I'd love to see that data because I haven't seen it yet. And and I really just, we we need to get the kids back in school. Full time.
Well, I I would just say that I I don't disagree that we want to get the kids back in school. It's not it's not even disagreeing with you philosophically. It's just a matter of whether or not you're going to follow the guidance or not. Yes, there are districts that are that are bringing back more students five days a week at the elementary level. And they have been comfortable and transparent in sharing with their community that they're not meeting that six feet guidance. So I know we keep going back to our doc to the doctors, to the Office of Public Health and asking them about their their recommendation for that. And they, at this point, have not yielded on that. And and neither has the CDC. So I I but that doesn't mean that doesn't mean you have to follow it. We don't. You don't have to. But but that that's been what's driven the administrative recommendation. Just so you're aware.
Mitch Schultz.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for all these questions and this very thorough presentation. I just I wanted to add, you know, a unique perspective because we do have a decision. We can decide. Do we want to go back less than six feet and go against what the doctors are saying, what our top is saying, what the guidelines are saying? We do have that option. Offering five days a week to to anyone would be ideal. We all want the kids back in school. We we know that it's a benefit. We know that that's the best way to learn. And unfortunately, COVID is not allowing us to do that unless we sacrifice something. So if we do offer five days a week, and I think what the administration is recommending here, or at least saying here is if we do offer five day a week instructions to everyone, we're actually denying safe in person learning to anyone. So that's what we'd have to decide. I mean, we could put it on the table and we could talk about that and we could you know, but that's where you're like, well, what's how is that equitable? You know, if I if I send my child back knowing that I'm I'm possibly putting him in a dangerous or her in his dangerous situation. And and just basically taking out an option, a choice to have some type of in person learning at a safe distance, following the guidelines. That's what we have to be deciding on. So there's there's that. And then the other the other thing I just wanted to mention, this is another point about Penny Pack. If you remember, we actually voted before the quarantine hit to keep Penny Pack open and basically hold on to it so we could release the property in a responsible way and make sure that that things that don't happen with other properties that the school district has. That's part of the reason why we kept it. Now, we did then talk about having possibly this extra space if it's usable. We can talk about that, too. But again, I just wanted to to mention that. That point. Thank you.
Mr. Coombs.
Yeah, I I've I'd like to thank our superintendent for putting together a presentation that is dealing with a very, very sensitive topic that we've never dealt with before. I mean, we can, we can argue both sides of the coin and and neither of us be right. There is no right or wrong. The reality is we have no loss of life. We've got nobody in in the hospital and you know, so you you can look at it however you want to look at it. But the one thing that I would like to say, and it's not, it's not to say I told you so, or we told you so. But we did this whole penny pack thing. And I remember the conversation about Penny Pack and I remember bringing it up and I remember being told we need it because we're going to need the space as we deal with the six feet space confinement that we're going to need in the future. And it had nothing to do with the sale of Penny Pack because we've never talked about that or Penny Pack going in the wrong hands. But it was an outlet for us to have the space capacity that we needed going forward with this pandemic. And we the conversation was about the pandemic. And the argument at the time from the facilities committee was we needed to shut Penny Pack down. And that's that was the thought when we built Crooked Bullet. That was the thought when we built Hollowell. And so I'm not, I'm not comfortable just sitting here now and saying that's the reason why, you know, Penny Pack wasn't closed because we we don't want it to fall in the wrong hands and we don't want it to be another lime kiln sending the lime kill elementary. The argument that was proposed to us and it was voted on. And we can go back and look at the minutes and it was voted on because it was essential for the space for the pandemic. And and that's all I want to say. Because I mean, there are a lot that I could say, but I that's all I want to say.
Are there any other comments or questions from board members?
I I just and then I I mentioned this, I knew Scott, I apologize. I'd like threw out eighteen questions to you there. But one of it is you know, the the two weeks like needing that to get ready and and that's just for first grade. I'm assuming when hopefully we'll get to the place very soon that we're going to be going full for everybody. I'm being optimistic, but I would like to get there very soon. What's the timeframe before when we make the decision and when it can be executed and happen?
Well, I mean, so we have, we have a plan in place, ready to put in motion if if this if the recommendation passes. And that includes assessing our our families of of their interest. You know, reassigning classes of need be to students, moving furniture, in some cases, organizing furniture, clearing rooms, creating additional spaces that we we don't want to dedicate resources to if we're not going to move forward with that. And so, you know, the to do that to start now, which is in essence, Wednesday tomorrow. If you're talking about a couple of days until Monday and then the file and then the following week, we we thought it was a reasonable timeline to get done what we needed to get done and communicated. Obviously, you know, if we need to get it done faster, we get it done faster. But we we that's that's where we that's where we stood right now.
Hey, can I just as a follow up to that? Because you and I know we voted on it as a board. I guess at the time, I may not have completely understood what we were doing. Because looking at the neighboring communities, taking Bucks County out of it, that when we for the guidance and and we voted for that, i- is that something that's that's holding you back more than you're comfortable with? Because if that's the case, maybe we should vote to, you know, take that burden off of you and then let's do what's right and get the kids back if it's in some cases where it's four and a half feet as opposed to six feet or stuff like that, you know, it's I I don't want that to be holding you back if that is what's holding you back. And maybe that is something that we should vote on or talk about or discuss wherever that that process will go to take that burden off of you and and let it, you know, let let us get moving.
I mean, I appreciate you saying that. I don't I I don't necessarily feel it as a burden. I feel it's you know, I'm in these meetings multiple times a week. I'm listening to doctors make recommendation. I'm listening to superintendents asking the asking the doctors regularly, like what provisions, you know, modifications, mitigation strategies would allow us to to be able to give on six feet? And their answer consistently has been, at this point, not yet. And so I've followed, I mean, I've stayed true to that. I that just because I I I don't feel it would be and I'm speaking for myself without judgment of others. I'm feeling I don't think it'd be the responsible thing for me to do to share with you a recommendation that would be against someone who knows something a heck of a lot more than I do about whether droplets four feet away or six feet away have an opportunity to infect someone that so that that's that's strictly what's I I don't view it as a burden, but I but I I am. I I mean, I I've chosen to follow rather strictly, I guess, and and certainly, I know I've opened myself up to some criticism for that, but that's that's just where my head is with it.
Any other questions or comments from board members? If there are no more questions or comments from board members, we will move on to public comment.
Thank you, Madam President. Let me get set right here. Okay, this is a reminder to everyone, you raise your hand or press start on in your phone, please. You'll be prompted and then you have to unmute manually. Please state your name and address and comments are limited to three minutes. There should be a timer on your screen. Everybody see that? Okay?
And this is the public comment for agenda items only. Just as a reminder. The public comment for any other items is at the end of the meeting.
Okay, first up on the list is Eric Rice. Eric, you can go ahead and unmute and make your comment. Eric, I still see you as muted from here.
Can 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 you hear me?
I can now. Yes, you're good to go.
Awesome. And I also submitted an email, but I'll save those questions with the assumption they will be addressed at the end. But just as we went through this, one of the things I continued to hear was that we were following the guidance strictly from the CDC guideline perspective. My understanding, and I don't know this personally, but my understanding is there are still intramural sports going on. And CDC guidance states six foot distance there as well. So if my understanding on the intramural isn't correct, I apologize. But if it is, then we're going outside that for sports, but we're not for education. So I'd like to understand. Is it correct? We're still doing that? And how's that different than education?
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Todd Stevens. Todd, you can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Thank you. Todd Stevens, six forty four Colonial Drive. I am, first of all, Dr. Evansledge and everybody, thank you so much for your work. I I understand the the challenges that you face. So I appreciate the work that you're doing. And a special thanks to the educators and staff who I know are are working hard every day to educate our students. I'm the father of two elementary school students and also the state representative for not only communities in the Hopper Whitsham School District, but I also represent part of the Upper Dublin School District, actually part of the Upper Dublin School District, part of the Wissickin School District and part of the North Penn School District. And I just wanted to touch upon a couple of points and highlight some of the the information from the recent CDC guidance that came out February twelfth. And Dr. Evans did a great job of reviewing a lot of that, but I think it's critical to restate one of the important sentences from page four in that guidance in the background section, that schools are an important part of the infrastructure of communities as they provide safe, supportive learning environments for students, employ teachers and other staff, and enable parents, guardians and caregivers to work. Schools also help to mitigate health disparities by providing critical services, including school meal programs and facilitate access to social, physical, behavioral and mental health services. And the CDC has noted how important it is to reopen schools. It's critical for schools to open as safely and as soon as possible, they said, and remain open to achieve the benefits of in person learning and key support services. I would just want to note, I've received a lot of inquiries to my office, which is why I'm here tonight. I want to make sure your board is aware. Particularly regarding the elementary school level. And I think what's driving that is I mentioned the other three school districts I represent and all three of them now have plans for all K through five students who wish to come into school five days a week to come in five days a week. Upper Dublin has been in person for elementary school students K through five since November ninth. Eighty two percent of their students are are doing that right now. They've had no in school transmission reported. Wissickin has been in person five days a week for elementary school students since the beginning of the school year. And North Penn is actually moving forward with in person learning available for K through twelve, starting next Monday. So you know, in Upper Dublin, they're not using the six feet. They are using six feet during lunch, about three to four feet most other times. At Wissickin, they are strictly adhering to six feet. North Penn, they're planning on adhering to six feet. You know, the CDC You know, the CDC does provide some latitude there. They say six feet to the greatest extent possible. That doesn't leave you in a great position, I know. And certainly our neighboring districts are doing different things. But with the, the space at Hollowell, I know there was planning for additional enrollment with the space at, at Crooked Billit and with the space available at Pennyback, I just wanted to let you know, I am available to help in any way, shape or form, get the district the resources and, and other necessary information they might need to bring these students back in person as quickly as possible.
That's been three minutes.
Okay, next we have Kristen, sorry, hold on. Give me one second here. Okay, next we have Kristen Fazio. You can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Hi, I'm Kirsten Fazio, Misty Hollow Drive in Maple Glen. I'm just speaking to sort of politely question the 81% attendance for the high school. I have a daughter there who returned hybrid as of February 1st and has been really happy to be back in school. Her mood, her attitude, her engagement, her attention level in school has been so much better since she's been back. But I was really shocked and surprised to learn that she literally has two to three kids in every single one of her classes that are showing up. Today she sent me a picture from school and she was literally the only one there. So while I know that we are prioritizing the younger kids, let's please not forget the older kids. 81%, I, I can't believe that that is a true number, but if there's any way to possibly bring these older kids back, I mean, the ones who are interested and are there two days a week, I bet they'd come five and they'd be really happy to do so. And I don't think that you're going to come across any space problems there. I mean, certainly with three kids in a class, any, any given day, you could probably triple that and have your six feet. So please let's not forget the, the older kids as well, because they are really hurting as well. They're hurting emotionally, they are hurting educationally, they're hurting mentally. And, you know, it would really benefit them to get back to school full-time whenever possible. I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay, next we have a call in number, and I apologize for mispronouncing names. It's not my forte, but I, I will try to get them as correct as I can. I apologize for that, Kirsten. Next is call in phone numbers, 215-688-0177. Again, please remember to state your name and your address. So you, 215-688-0177, you can unmute and speak.
Hello, this is Thomas Byrne from 56 Church Road in Horsham. And I just wanted to make a comment, going back to something that D.J. Schultz had said earlier about if we were to send students back, we would be sacrificing providing a safe environment for any in-person learning. And I just, I, I guess I just wanted to comment on that, just for the fact of, you know, one, safe is clearly a subjective term, since many other school districts are in school five days a week and not becoming super spreaders. But I think the, the bigger issue is, well, what are we sacrificing right now in the current, in, in the current situation that we're in? We're sacrificing our children's education, we're sacrificing their mental wellbeing, their emotional wellbeing. It's, it, you know, everything in life is a balance. And I think we just have to decide, you know, what balance is best for our children. And, and I think it's pretty clear at this point, having lived through this now for almost a year, that being back in school is, is the best, the best situation and the, the right choice to make at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up we have Michelle. Michelle, please remember to state your full name and address. You can go ahead and unmute and speak. Michelle, I see you as unmuted in Zoom, but I don't hear anything from you at this time. Is your, maybe your phone muted in addition to Zoom or something similar? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and leave your hand raised, but I'm going to come back to you in just a moment. Next we have Justin Heath. Justin, you can go ahead and unmute, make your comment.
Justin Heath, I'm at 5 Fawn Lane, Horsham. Appreciate the ability to make a comment tonight. I just want to thank Jim, Tara, Eric, Todd Stevens. It's certainly great to hear all of you be so vocal tonight. We appreciate it. I say we, there's speaking for the group of parents that absolutely want their kids back in school. It doesn't make sense to me personally, how the township is allowing, and Eric, you are correct in your, your comments, intramural sports to go on, particularly with, you know, towns and some basketball and other sports in the township. These kids are within six feet and sometimes even less than six feet during the activities that they're playing outside of the school atmosphere. But yet it seems as though, you know, we, we have the inability as a school district to provide them with, you know, a safe learning environment in the school at a six-foot distance. We have more than enough space throughout the entirety of the township. We have resource buildings. Horsham Township just spent millions of dollars on redeveloping township municipal buildings along Horsham Road that we could be repurposing and putting students in. I just, I'm miffed at, at the idea that as a school district, we are this far behind the curve compared to our neighboring, our neighboring towns that are residing in Montgomery County, that are adhering to the six-foot guidelines and bringing their kids back to school within a six-foot radius. I, I just, I don't understand it. It's very frustrating. We want options. There are parents out there that want the option to send their kids back five days a week and, and we can say all we want that we're working towards that, but the reality is, is that, you know, it's taking forever. We should be far ahead from where we currently are right now. And it's just, it's super frustrating to see the lack of communication and the lack of questions and answers being provided by the board in its entirety. You know, we know that there's some good work going on and, and that doesn't go unrecognized, but, you know, the public demands more, we deserve more, we, we deserve to have the opportunity to be surveyed. And for those that are not feeling entirely safe to send their kids back to school, they should have the option to continue the virtual learning platform while we should have the option to be able to send our kids back five days a week. It shouldn't start with just first grade, it should be through K to five across the entire platform.
Okay. Second, next we have Maggie Kissner. Maggie, you can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can.
Sorry about my clock in the background. My name is Maggie Kissner. I'm at 523, 523 Sherwood Lane in Horsham. I just, I wanted to second what Kirsten said earlier about the high school. I have a hard time kind of believing those numbers as well. My son's classes only have anywhere from three to five kids in his classes. I hear an awful lot about the elementary school kids and, and I'm happy to, the kindergarteners, and now we're talking about first graders going back full-time. But I, I hate to see the older kids being forgotten. They, it's just important for them to be in full-time as the younger ones, for different reasons, of course, but it's still equally important. I also wanted to comment about the six-feet guidance that has been stressed time and time and time again. I hear six-feet guidance one more time. I think I'm going to explode. Other districts, and you've even admitted that they have gone below the six feet perhaps to accommodate going back full-time. And that's because the guidance says where feasible. I think we really need to consider that a little bit more strongly. And I also had a quick question about the vaccine situation. I know that the guidance is saying, that emphasizes importance of vaccines for all, including educators, but does not deem vaccine, vaccination of staff as a required condition for in-person instruction. Well, my question is, are you going to be requiring vaccinations in the future to get full-time? You spend a lot of time talking about vaccination, so that's kind of why I'm going there with that. And also there was no mention about the kids and, and vaccination requirements for them. I know they're not approved yet for kids, but of course they're working on that. And I've been hearing and reading that that it may, it may be sometime this summer. So I was just wondering if that was going to wind up being another hurdle that we had to, a, a new goalpost, if you will, to have to meet before we can go back full-time. And that's all I had for now. Thank you very much.
Okay, next we have Jen Matten, M-A-T-T-O-N. You can go ahead and unmute and make your comment.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, great. My name is Jennifer Matten and I live at Maurice Lane. And I just want to kind of echo some of the, the responses that I've heard tonight. One, my daughter, my, I'm raising my, my fourth child in the Hepburn Horsesham School District. Thankfully, my other three have graduated already. My third graduated in 2020, which was a very emotional experience. And my number four just turned 14 when COVID hit and we closed down the schools. She turned 15 tomorrow. It sounds like at the rate that our school board and our administration have been considering this return for our older students, that by the time she gets back into school, she's going to be a full-grown adult and school will be over. She's going to miss full two, two psychosocial developmental levels because of this COVID-19 vaccination and the inflexibility of this school district. I am a little trying to stay calm and not be so irritated, but she's my daughter and I'm her only mother and I'm the only one looking out for her. And it seems to me that the people I am paying my money to have no interest in looking out for my daughter. I'm, I'm excited, I'm ecstatic that the kindergarteners and the first graders are getting back. That's awesome. You need to start considering the older, the older kids as well. These kids are trying to prepare for college and their future and they're just forgotten. Oh, we'll let them wait. You and I as adults can wait. We can wait. We're adults, we've gone through our developmental stages. My daughter, from the age of 13 to 18, is learning invaluable life skills that will go on for, that, that, that will form her adult life. And this is being denied to her. We've had to go out of our way to pay extra so that we can get her into other schools that are teaching her the things that, that, music, for instance, music's her big thing. She's an excellent bass player. We were so looking for her to her getting into high school and, and, and showing everybody what she could do. We had to enroll her at School of Rock, which has been amazing. $400 a month. I want to know, am I going to get that money back from the school district? Because we've had to go outside of what we've already paid to continue her education there. I'd like to also echo what Justin was saying a little earlier about the different community buildings. We're paying all this money for these, these buildings that have been redone and we're not using those as a resource. We need to get on that. I'm paying you guys money, get on it. Thank you.
All right, next we have Margaret. Remember to state your name, please, and you can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Hi, I'm Margaret Olson, 14 Biddle Lane, Horsham, Pennsylvania, 19044. I have three children in the school district, two at Keith Valley, a sixth grader and eighth grader, and one in the high school. And I think it's awesome that the kindergartners and the first graders will be going five days a week, but we really need to get these kids in school five days a week in all of the grades. Middle school is already challenging as it is because of that, you know, the age, you know, 11 years old to like 14 years old, high school, like my daughter's social anxiety has increased. I have another daughter that was getting distinguished honor since fourth grade. She is struggling. I am getting emails from the school because she's not able to hand in her work on time. And when she does hand in her work, it's excellent, but this, the way they're being taught is just not for every student. And I agree with, I forget her name, Jennifer Matten or something like that, that they really need to be in school. The hybrid is, you know, twice a week. And, you know, my kids were like, they would be better off with five days a week, like they would rather do all or nothing. I don't think it's good that they're in the house all the time. They need to be out and sociable, they're losing their social skills, they just need to be around other children. And I think you should give the parents the option. If you can do under six feet and have them in five days a week and maybe have them six feet apart when they're eating lunch, I'm all for that. But please give us the option. This has been over a year. Like other people have said, other neighboring school districts in Montgomery County, whether they're private or public, their kids are going five days a week without issues. So please, I mean, give us the option to let them go in five days a week. And I will be the first one to sign off. They need to go in five days a week. My kids have not been in school for the last two weeks because we didn't have school bus transportation, that's another issue. But as long as we have the school bus transportation, like there's no reason for them to not be in school, especially with these extracurricular sports. There's like volleyball, volleyball tournaments and basketball, there's no way those kids are six feet apart. And thank you for letting me speak.
Okay. Next we have Michelle. Michelle, you can go ahead, please remember to state your name and address, you can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, great. Hi, my name is Michelle Cottingham, 133 Byberry Road. My daughter is in sixth grade, she's IEP. And she's doing Hardest Academy because I'm high-risk and her grandmother's high-risk. I want my daughter in school just like everybody else. I mean, is there going to be a special classroom for high-risk kids and parents to come in? You know, a special place for them? What is Monday going to look like for the Hardest Academy? Is that going to be still another asynchronous day now for them? Um, so those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have a dial-in user, 215-588-6559. Please state your name and address and you can go ahead and unmute and speak. For our dial-in user, it's still showing me in Zoom as you being muted, I'll, I'll ask, I can, I can't unmute you, I can prompt you to unmute, but that's, I can't actually unmute you. There we go.
Okay, you hear me now?
I can.
Okay, this is Bill Ma from a resident of 626 Brumard Drive in Haprow. I'm glad to see the first graders are going back, it's a good start. And I appreciate the time it takes to make that happen from March 8. And I appreciate the time it takes to make that happen from March eighth. This cohort's flip-flopping on Mondays. I don't understand why that has to wait till March eighth. Why can't that start next Monday? What is the planning and change necessary to wait till Monday? Dr. Evans Lodge, I respect your opinions. I respect your six-foot distancing. That's your decision, but we're sitting here waiting for numbers to change, waiting, waiting, waiting. We're being reactionary. We are not proactive. These numbers that you're getting hopeful for were super low in September when it wasn't safe. It wasn't safe in October when the numbers were super low. It's not gonna change. The vaccination isn't gonna change. Nothing is going to change. If you can't do six feet now, we need to make a plan of how we can make it happen. If we have to build plexiglass walls between the desks to make it work, that's fine, but these numbers are not changing. We have to do something instead of waiting for something to happen. Build walls, plexiglass, build them in the hallway so the kids are crossing each other. Whatever it is, we have to do something to make it happen. It's time to be proactive and not reactive. Thank you for your time.
Okay, next we have O'Neil. Please state your name and address. You can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Hi, Brian O'Neil, five thirty-one Vestry Drive, Ambler. I think I echo a lot of what the other people tonight have been saying. I think that. You know, as a physician, I have a very good understanding of the risk of infection and transmission and. The six-foot guidance that's been put out by the CDC is nice and it's a recommendation, but. Schools all over the country have managed to open without strictly following that guideline. So it should be emphasized that we try to do that as much as possible, but. We're not, nobody's walking around with rulers measuring out six feet between kids anywhere between sports. Activities, social events, work events, trains, planes, automobiles. I mean, it's happening. And transmission rates now are quite low. I think really what our school board. And superintendent need to hear is that. We should be voting on a a plan for the entire K through five. Schools at this point, and then soon thereafter, one for six to twelve. This has gone on for a long time and we're hardly any further than we were in September when I first listened to one of these meetings. Catholic schools all over the district are open and the transmission rates are are zero to minimal. Other schools in Montgomery County are opening as we've heard and we should be able to. Follow shortly. We shouldn't be way behind the eight ball. We should be at least keeping up with our peers. And it's it's, you know, we've all heard about all the bad things that happen to kids when they're not in school and they're missing out. I have a high school senior who's missing out on senior year, missing out on education. The number of kids showing up in the high school is dramatically less than those numbers that you showed today. They're just not showing up. And, you know, they're missing out. The education is lacking. Preparation for college was terrible. Fortunately, she's the fourth of our children, so we had a lot of experience with doing applications and essays and whatnot, but it's really been a bad experience. Thanks.
Okay, that is the last of the raised hands, Madam President.
Mr. Riker, do we have any emails that you need to read?
Yes, Madam President, I do. First one is from Brianna Adams. One fifteen Hunt Drive, Horsham, PA. Dear School Board and Dr. Evanslog, I want to thank you and the board for everything you've done for our community over the last year. These people in the Facebook group of Hepburn-Horsham don't speak for most of us. We appreciate what you're doing and how hard you're working to help keep everyone safe. These are the same people, as you can see, are the same ones complaining that they don't have a snow day. Honestly, how? How can you sue the school board for not being open and then complain when it is open? As far as the lawsuit, this is just a waste of our tax money and your time. Again, this lawsuit is from six to seven families, not the majority of us. The fact that it was served on Christmas Eve is disgusting and these people are not our voice. Teachers are doing a fabulous job and I couldn't be more proud of them. Second. Virtual comment from Eric Rice, Seven Penner Clay in Horsham. I'd like to understand the reasons prohibiting an option for return to full in-person and what we've been. And are doing to attempt to solve for them. So assuming an obstacle is space, given the CDC's guidance, what has been done to attempt to work around that? Are we pursuing additional space available in the district outside of schools? Do we even know how many have interest and that working within the six feet guidelines aren't possible? Can you let me know what steps have been taken in the last year to work towards full in-person? We are now a year into this and I have little confidence the guidance will change enough or anytime soon to allow a full return in our current environment. And to date, I've seen little movement from the district on other options to work towards full in-person. Can you explain how many well-documented negative impacts to our children in a remote or hybrid model are being factored into your decision-making? How do we get the board meetings where we can have dialogue on both sides of the equation, not a Q and A, but true dialogue? I understand we can't pack the auditorium with. With all parents. But the option can be broken into three categories, fully remote, hybrid, and full in-person. And it's apparent on social media, there are respectful but passionate. Parents on each side of the equation. I should invite or designate a few. So questions are as follows. What is prohibiting a full return to in-person? What have we done or are doing to work through those obstacles? How are we weighing the negative impacts on other side of the equation? How do we get representatives from each viewpoint in a meeting with the board where we can have open dialogue, not just Q and A? And that concludes the virtual comments. From those who provided full name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Riker. Okay, so now we move on to item four, approval of the minutes from the January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one and February first, twenty twenty-one. Board meetings. So I'm looking for a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion on those minutes? All of those in favor, please say aye. Consent agenda items. Bills for approval, voided checks, budget transfers, adjustment reports, capital projects report, childcare programs, food service report. Payroll reports, student activities reports, student scholarship memorial report, tax collectors report, and treasurer's financial reports. So I'm looking for a motion for approval of items five A through J.
This is. A second, that's DJ.
Any discussion on those items? All of those in favor, please say aye. Human Resources Action Items. Items A, B, and C, certified staff, extracurricular staff, and support staff. Looking for a motion for approval of those items.
This is DJ, so moved.
Teresa Brown, second.
Any discussion on those items? All of those in favor, please say aye. Special Services Action Items, approval of student on homebound instruction. Looking for a motion for approval of that.
Ara Halston, so moved.
Susan Hunsinger Hoff, I'll second it.
Any discussion? All of those in favor, please say aye. Business Office Action Items. Item A, bank accounting list. B, capital projects bid approval. C, exoneration of Horsham and Hepburn tax collectors. And D, PDE forty-six oh five residents.
Eric Coombs, so moved.
Erin, second.
Second.
Any discussion on those items? All of those in favor, please say aye. Committee Reports. First, we have a curriculum tuning report by Ms. Hussinger Hoff.
Thank you. The Curriculum Committee did not meet in February, but we look forward to an update on the review of the ELA and Social Studies curricula. That will be coming on during our March first work session. And then further updates as we continue on to our next meeting. Thank you. That's it.
Mr. Coombs, do you have a Facilities Committee Report?
No, I do not, Madam President.
Ms. McCouts, do you have a Finance Committee Report?
I do not.
Ms. Schultz, you have a Policy Committee Report.
I do, I do. We we met earlier this month. I think it was the third. And we had a few topics that we reviewed and the first two, we. Madam President, should we go for the action items first and then the summary?
Sure.
Okay, so we've heard already the first reading of two, one revised policy and one new policy. The revised policy is on. Class rank, policy number two one four. So. If we don't have any more discussion on that, can we have a call for the second reading acceptance acceptance?
So we're looking for a motion for approval of the second reading of policy two fourteen and three fifty-five. Two fourteen is a revised policy and three fifty-five is a new policy.
I make a motion of the second reading. Teresa Brown.
I'll second it. Susan Hunsinger Hoff.
Is there any discussion around these policies? All of those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? HR Committee Report.
Wait, I just wanted to do a quick summary of the rest.
I'm sorry.
We. Talked about the Equity Policy and Action Plan. There's work in progress and Dr. Taylor gave us, Dr. Taylor gave us an overview. We've already met with the PSBA and. And that's moving along. Dr. King gave us a summary of the work in progress concerning amendments, possible amendments to our homework policy. And that's moving along nicely as well. And then Ms. Johnson and Dr. Evanslog briefly discussed the work needed to be completed surrounding. Act, the twenty twenty act ten legislation that was passed. And what that is all about. It's a, it's a new law that became effective just this January and it contemplates a situation where a student is convicted. Or adjudicated delinquent of sexual assaulting another student. Act ten requires school districts to expel, transfer, or reassign the convicted or delinquent student. We are writing a new policy to comply with Act one ten and we'll be discussing it at the next policy meeting. With the intent of having the first read at the March action meeting and second read and adoption in April. So. Having said that, we can talk more about that in the policy meeting. Our next policy meeting is on March third and you are all pleased invited to join. I believe you all get an invitation via Zoom from Greg. Before that meeting. So we'll be talking about the equity. Policy, the homework possible policy, and also that Act one ten. So please come. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. HR Committee Report. Mr. Brown is not with us tonight. I don't believe there's anything to report though for the HR Committee. So, moving to liaison reports, Ms. Connor Halston for Eastern Center for Arts and Technology.
I, they have a lot going on over there. They're working on their first choice program. So many times we have students that wanna go and the program they want as their first choice is full. And they make a second choice. So they're making a lot of changes to make sure that the the courses that are are. They that are wanted are accessible. They're also doing the COVID antigen testing at our Eastern. They thanked us all for approving the budget. They will not be offering the NOCTI, which is error. Form of a standardized testing at the end of a program. We can't get the the testers to come in. And the kids haven't had enough hours in the building to qualify. And our summer school camp will be canceled. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Taylor, Federal Programs Report.
Good report, Madam President. Thank you.
Hey, Montgomery County Intermediate Unit. I, we are going to be looking to approve the budget for the MCIU. Tonight, the amount. For Hepburn-Horsham is actually being reduced this year. It was seventy-nine three last year and this year it would be. Seventy-eight, three twenty-six. So I'm looking for a motion. Oh, actually, we have to do a roll call for this item. So, Mr. Riker, would you conduct that, please?
I say, well, Madam President. Jennifer Wilson.
Aye.
Teresa Brown.
Aye.
Eric Coombs.
Aye.
Susan Hunsinger Hoff.
Aye.
Mary McCouch.
You're on mute, I think.
No. I'm sorry, aye.
Aye.
DJ Schultz.
Aye.
Sarah Connor Halston.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. On PSBA Report, Ms. Brown.
Yes, Madam President. PSBA and eight other educational groups from superintendent administrators to teachers to maintenance. Wrote a joint letter to Governor Tom Wolf last Thursday, asking him to prioritize school staff. For the COVID nineteen vaccine, calling it an absolute essential step towards reopening schools and keeping them open. Secondly, standardized testing typically starts in March and there was a lot of conversation about that at our meeting. Several educational associations joined together and sent a letter to the Biden administration. Asking to let Pennsylvania schools skip standardized testing this year and to use local testing. And thirdly, PSBA is inviting all school board directors to attend their Spring Advocacy Day. The day will center around contacting legislators to discuss critical issues affecting public education. Registration is available under Event Registration on my PSBA organization. The date is March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one at four PM. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Dr. Evanslog, Superintendent's Report. Would you like to speak first and then us vote, or do you want us to vote first?
I'll speak first, if you don't mind, Madam President. Thank you. Just a few things. First, like to, again, thank our staff for Keith Valley and Blair Mill staff for presenting this evening and sharing those highlights of. Of programs in the building. We appreciate that. And again, extend my thanks to the to the community for their flexibility around the transportation challenges as we're dealing with excessive. Quarantines of staff through that. So thank you for your help in transporting students to the to schools during that during that time. We wanna wish Stephanie Yoder, our Executive Director from the Education Foundation, we wanna wish Stephanie well and thank her for her service. Stephanie has a another professional opportunity that she is exploring. She's done great work with the foundation. And been a great advocate for the program. And she will be missed and we wanna wish her the best and and thank her for her service to the community. And as you know, the the foundation does a lot of of great programming. They have a, the Education Foundation is hosting an event, an upcoming event, a free virtual event on the twenty-third at six thirty PM. Entitled Parenting Through a Pandemic: Strategies to Promote Children's Emotional Development with Dr. Michael Casano. So. We thank them for hosting that event and invite invite our families to to join that meaningful, meaningful event. Just a reminder about snow days. There's possibility, unfortunately, it seems like we have. Had frequent weather challenges in the last couple of weeks. We do have a forecast for Thursday that doesn't look promising. And just a reminder that we have exhausted our snow days from the calendar. So if the possibility exists that we cannot safely transport students to school. Or do so within a two-hour delay, we would be transitioning to a fully virtual day on on this Thursday. But that, we would, of course, communicate that. As well with everyone. There is an enrollment update that's included in the section of my report and board docs for your viewing as well. And that concludes my report and I just asked for consideration for the record. And that concludes my report and I just ask for consideration for the recommended action items that we discussed earlier.
Right, so we are looking for approval of the recommendation to transition to five days a week of in-person instruction for first graders in all schools beginning on March 8th. So if I could have a motion.
So moved.
Okay.
Tara Hall.
Second, Teresa Brown.
Any discussion on that item?
I have a question. Did we say kindergarten is also included in that?
Kindergarten's already in.
Oh, they are in. I apologize. Okay.
Any other comments or questions?
Can I have a, just a quick, just a quick question? It's not an amendment or anything like that. For our next meeting, can we discuss or even have a presentation on the remainder of elementary being able to go in person? Are you asking me or, I mean, I'll do, I'll do a presentation. Whatever the board would like me to present, I'm happy to prepare. I would, I would like that presentation.
As long as it's not 35 slides, Scott.
Can't promise that. I can't promise that.
I do think there's an appetite for sure to, to hear what, what has been done behind the scenes that we haven't really talked about. I know we've been talking about off-site, you know, can, can we get them into office buildings or, and penny pack? Like if there's any information about, about that and just to inform the public of the work that has been done and if there's anything that, anything that you can see possible moving forward. I, I'd love to see that too.
And I just said, I said the rest of elementary, I would love it for everything, but I'll take what I can get. I just want the kids back in full time.
I, I, I agree with Jim. I think we all want the kids back in full time. Again, it's gonna, it's gonna depend on the numbers. So God, I know you're doing the best you can. So.
My, my only thing with the numbers, and I know we talked about this back in September. It, it's, you know, if we get to the numbers we were at in September through October, excuse me, would we be full time right now? I, I would hope so.
Possibly. I would, I would agree, but, but that's, you know.
But it's frustrating. We weren't back in school. Then there's not.
Wrong, maybe.
Um, I have a, the motion is for first graders coming back.
Yes, it is. I was voting on those two items separately.
They're separate items. So we voted on it.
So we're, we're in the discussion phase for the five days a week in person for first graders.
Okay.
So is there any further discussion on, on that item?
No.
Okay, so all of those in favor of transitioning to five days a week of in-person instruction for first graders in all schools beginning March 8th, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. The second item for consideration is that we begin Monday in-person instructing by alternating cohorts on Monday for grades two to 12, beginning on March 8th. Is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. Susan Hunsinger-Hoff.
Any discussion around that item? All of those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Can I ask the question? Obviously, I don't know if this is the opportunity. I just want, I want, I, I want them in full time. I want them to have the opportunity. So what, what that is with this, like, yeah, sure, I'll take the Monday, but I want them five days. So I don't know. How do you, how, how am I voting? I just want them to have the opportunity to make that decision.
The parents can make. Voting on that right now, though. That's not what the recommendation is.
You can make an amendment.
What would the amendment be?
We just voted on it. Everybody just voted on it. So Marion, if you, are you opposing that, that vote or are you saying aye to?
Well, if she didn't vote, she can make a recommendation for an amendment, correct? If she didn't vote yet.
Well, it, it was called for a vote. So if she wants to make a new motion, she could do that, but.
Do it, Marion.
Yes, then I would like a new motion for offering all, uh, full-time in school, two, two through 12.
I second it.
Any discussion around that? Is there a date specific or just for the motion?
I'll, you know what? March 8th. I, I can accept March 8th. Like if, if, I can accept March 8th for offering in full time. If it's this that we have to vote on, I don't understand why we can't do it sooner than March 8th, but as this amendment for, for right now, that March 8th, uh, offering full-time in, in person.
I second.
Ms. Schultz?
I have a question. So just to be clear, what you're asking us to vote on is full-time K through five. Going back with significantly less. I'm sorry, because one is, yeah, I'm sorry. But, but K through five, having everyone back in schools and not having a plan for proper social distancing or following the guidelines or, you know, taking the recommendations of physicians that you're asking. We're going to vote to come back to who knows how close we're going to be and what the dangers of that's going to be. I just, I just want to add, I, I, I think we all know that like three feet distance is great if it's just large particles, but we know the small particles carry COVID too and they travel much further. And the distance there, at least inside, I mean, if you're outside, it's different, but inside it's six feet unless you have some kind of super HVAC or, you know, I don't know, hazmat suits. So I just want to make sure we're clear. We're voting on going back to school for K through five at less than recommended mitigation standards.
I think it was two through 12.
Right, but, but K through K and one will be affected too. They'll be coming back to school. If the whole, if the whole school is in, in session, then how can they maintain six feet? The Dr. Everslag, am I understanding that correctly?
North Penn's doing it starting Monday.
Again, I'm just clarifying what we're voting on. We're voting on disregarding the six feet distance and disregarding small particles carrying COVID and all that lovely stuff. And, and Dr. Everslag, am I correct? If, if we have all five grades back in elementary school, K through five is not going to be socially distanced properly according to guidelines, at least guidelines now.
There will not be, there will not be anywhere close to being six feet distancing two through 12, two through 12, if you.
What about, what about K and one? Will they have social distancing?
Well.
They're going to have that going forward.
Well.
We voted on that. We just voted on that.
They will, but I just want to offer one condition to that and that is we, we have our K, our first grade plan includes using spaces that are currently available, knowing that they're, assuming that grades, for grades two through 12 would be coming in hybrid. If they are not and they're back every day, some of those, we'd have to rethink what those spaces would look like for first grade and may not be able to ensure six feet distancing for first grade.
Thank you.
Is there any other, Mr. Coombs, your hand raised? Did you have anything else to add?
I, 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 I agree that I want the kids back in school. I, I think personally, I think March, the, the next meeting, we should reassess where we are based on the numbers. I, I don't want to, I don't want to vote on something that's unrealistic. And we, we have no parameters to judge it on. I mean, we've, we've, we've followed the guidelines to this point. And we've done, we've done an injustice on one side, but a justice on the other side. So, um, I, I don't want to vote in say March 8th where everybody's going back to school because I think that's an, to me, an unrealistic position for this board to take right now. I think we should revisit it on March 8th and say, if the numbers are declining, then that's a decision we make then. But to make a decision now, I think is unrealistic. That's, that's my opinion.
And I, I would have to agree with you, Mr. Coombs. You know, there's no plan for this. And it's, I, I, we've been following the recommendations and they, they are sticking to that six foot of distancing. I, I feel at this point that we should not be voting for this.
I just don't understand how private schools and North Penn and how are these schools doing it? How, how, why aren't we thinking outside blocks? Why aren't we using Penny Pack? Why aren't we using, you know, other rooms that, you know, using the libraries, using the auditoriums?
Address that in that we don't have the staff to, you know, utilize that space. We would have to hire a lot of additional staff to use that space and maintain six feet of distance, which we do not have. There are not teachers available right now to hire even. North Penn, I understand their attendance rate for the five-day in-person is very, very low.
Well, and that was going to be my second point is we still have Hatters Academy. Who says that they still wouldn't, that Hatters Academy would remain Hatters Academy and?
I, 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 to be honest, and I'm not knocking anybody on the board or knocking any of administration. To be honest, I just don't think we've planned for this for March 8th. To be honest, I, I, I think, I think in, in June, we talked about it. I don't think we, we anticipated this lasting this long and did had a plan in place to bring everybody back by March 8th.
So how much longer do we need? How much longer do we need? I mean, we've been at this since last March. It's, it's, I just, my heart goes out to these community members that, and it might not be all of them that want to go back. But I listen and we have, we receive email after email and listening to the callers and it, it's, I, I just think we're doing a disservice.
Marion, I feel your frustration. I'm just saying that to set an unrealistic date that gets out in the community is setting us up for failure when we really don't know how we're going to do that.
Can we keep, keep order, please? It's, Mr. Coombs is speaking right now and then Ms. Brown is up next. Thank you.
I'm, I'm, I'm done. I mean, I'm good.
Ms. Brown, it's your turn to speak.
I'm, my question has to do with the ventilation at Penny Pack. Is the school, alone with having to hire other people, what is the ventilation like at Penny Pack? I, it's a question. And also, Jim made a recommendation that the next meeting, we talk about it and you present something for us. Eric is supporting that, but now we're talking about throwing kids in without a plan. I think Jim's original idea about us at least looking at it at our next board meeting is a good idea, but I'd like to know the ventilation at Penny Pack.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Greenhall?
So the one thing that, that we've been in, it's like, so let's use some, some numbers. We've been in this for over 340 days since this all started, March 12th, right? And it, 160 days since the schools have been open. So that's 180 days from when it closed to before it opened again. And we're talking about not having plans? What the heck are we doing? Like seriously, this is embarrassing. Like in, in, we, we should have had plans long ago that the moment that this was ready, whether it be the numbers or what other people are doing or whatever, we should have had our plan and we should have been ready and we should have implemented it. And you know who's suffering? It's the kids. You know what? This is, the fact that we don't have this, it's, it's, it's beyond frustrating and it's embarrassing. I'd like to speak to that if I could, Madam President, and, 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 you know, we have staff members and groups, of, of groups of our administrators meeting multiple times a week for hours and hours doing planning on this. And so, but, but the idea that you can just pivot a, in, in a week, turn around and, and assess, assess the number of students that we, that would, would, would want to make a choice, reschedule them. We have, we have to reschedule the entire middle school. We'd have to reschedule the entire middle school. The entire middle school right now is scheduled for kids that have a, a certain teacher for virtual and certain teachers for in-person. As soon as that, as soon as that percentage switches, you're rescheduling the, the entire school and most likely hiring additional staff. And that, that's not something that just happens on the dime. It doesn't mean that we haven't considered what the impact would be of, of bringing staff back. But to be able to do it right, right away in a week is, is not, is not an operationally feasible task. If there's plans in place and we know that this eventually was going to be a situation where, okay, we're ready and then we got to wait? No, those plans should be in place and should have been working on the moment this started. It should have been plans being put in place that when we reach these certain numbers and, and whatever it is, that it can be implemented right away. The fact that we're reacting and then waiting for when we get to a certain place and then we need time? That to me is mismanagement. That to me needs to be, like, someone needs to be accountable. Because that, like, when, when we're talking about choices now, about families or whatever, and, and, and I'm hearing people saying that, you know, the choice unfortunately is going to be is, do they stay in public school or not? That shouldn't be the case. We should have had a plan that the moment this was hit, boom, it's going to be done. The moment this was hit, boom, it's going to be done. Not being reactionary. Come on. That's ridiculous. It's seriously, we should be embarrassed by that.
Okay, Ms. Connor Halston?
Thank you. The, the six-foot mandate, other schools are going below six foot. It's not, as far as I know, it is not a law. It is not if we don't follow at least six feet that we are breaking any laws. It was where feasible. And obviously our buildings are not big enough to make it feasible. We have success stories of other Montgomery County public schools, private schools that are all doing this. And maybe we should follow the success instead of just following the fear and give it a try. Whether it takes moving teachers, finding people, we, we need to do it. We've made, it just seems like alls we do is have excuses. It's just time to find a way, make a way and let the kids go to school.
Ms. Schultz?
Yeah, I definitely want to address that. There, there definitely has been schools that have gone back and there's varying degrees of success. There's, you know, we talk about private schools. Private schools operate on private dime different, but there's also been outbreaks. There's reports in the, recently as, at the end of January about outbreaks, six or more spreading in small private schools. Wissahickin was, had to close even though they follow mandated and they still had to close. So there's definitely success, but there's not success too. So we have to keep that in mind. And then I just want to address, Mr. Green, what do you think has been happening? I, I've been talking to Dr. Everslag and the administration and coming up with ideas and saying, hey, what about, what about churches? Are there some places we can put in here? Are there, are there offices we can use? Can we get that up to code? Is that even possible? We can't really put third graders in a place where adults go. There's just so many, why do you think, look, where have you been? There's been work going on and just because we don't have a plan right now because factors and mitigations and things change, we're, I, I believe Scott and the administration are not mismanaging this. They're trying their very best to keep everybody safe. The kids are definitely, I feel for all the kids. I have kids in school. I have, I know kids. I, I help kids. And I know they need to go back to school. I know that there's some mental health issues and, and it's, it's so sad and it, but. And it, but the, the accusation that's being mismanaged totally is, is I think just unprofessional. And, and wrong. And you're part of this system. You're part of this process. If you want to point blame, point blame at yourself because if you don't know what's going on. Then you, you should, you should own, own some responsibility too. Cause I've been talking to Dr. Evanson and, and coming up with ideas, so. Let's not, let's not be disrespectful, number one.
So wait, is that a question? Can I respond?
I don't know if that's a question or if it was just my feelings.
Sounded like a question.
I don't know about that. You can answer.
If I, if I, well.
No, no, go, go, go with the order.
Don't what? I raised my hand.
Yep. It's your turn, Mr. Coombs.
I, I, I don't want this board to get out of hand with what's going on. All I'm saying is March eighth, to say we want everybody back by March eighth is unrealistic. And it, it, we all want everybody back yesterday. There's not, there's not anybody, I think, on this board that didn't want anybody back yesterday. Nobody wants to go to bed thinking about kids committing suicide, kids dealing with emotional problems. I'm seeing it in my, my son's foundation. I'm seeing it in applications that aren't coming in for kids to apply for college. I'm seeing it firsthand. I'm just saying. If we're, if we're talking about tomorrow, getting first graders back, I don't see how we can get K through twelve back by March eighth. It just, it's just not realistic. In terms of a planning perspective, whether the plan was dropped in June, whether the plan was dropped in September, I don't know. I'm just telling you. I just don't see how that's a realistic date. All I'm saying is at March eighth, when this board meets again. That should be our focus. Date to get everybody back. So that's where we should be working for, not March eighth is the date, but March eighth is the decision point for us. And if we're going to task our administrators to do that. Let's give them a chance to put the plan together. That's just my opinion.
I, um, I think it's time that we vote on this issue. Um, so the motion on the floor is to bring all of the students back five days a week. For second grade through twelfth grade. So I would like to do a roll call vote for this.
Madam President, what is the date that you're talking about?
I'm sorry, for March eighth, March eighth.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Coombs, for the, the, uh, clarification there. So, Mr. Riker, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Madam President. Jennifer Wilson.
No.
Teresa Brown.
She's on mute.
Teresa Brown.
No.
Eric Coombs.
No.
Susan Hanziger Hoff.
No.
Marion McCouch.
I agree it can't be done by March eighth. I will say no, but I would like a plan.
I, I would like a plan also. I, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, that's not the vote.
No.
Jim Greenhall.
Yes.
DJ Schultz.
No.
Tara Connor Halston.
Yes.
The motion does not pass. Moving on to public comment.
But, uh, do we have to vote on going back Mondays?
No, we already did that.
Okay, cool.
Okay, let me share my screen.
So this is the time for the public to offer their comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to make a comment, please raise your hand. When the, um. When Greg lets you know it's your turn to speak, you can unmute yourself and speak. You have three minutes. Please remember to state your name, address and municipality of residence. Go ahead, Greg.
Okay, first we have Jen Matten. Uh, you can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Hi, this is Jen Matten. I'm back again. Uh, Maurice Lane, uh, again, Jennifer Matten. I have just a few comments. I was taking some notes during, uh, your meeting. Um, and so here we go. I'm just going to start with my list. First, in response to DJ, I would just like to say, um, that you guys may have been having this conversation behind the scenes, but you haven't been sharing it with the public. So I think y'all need to get on that. I want to know why this hasn't been a constant conversation about getting these kids back to school. That should have been your only conversation since the day the, the school closed. So March thirteenth of two thousand twenty, March fourteenth, your conversation should have been, when are we going to get these kids back to school and how are we going to do it? Uh, my next comment is. I just never thought I, I, in my wildest dreams, I never imagined having to fight with the school board and then the administration to get my kid back into school. Rather than, you know, like, usually, like, isn't the fight like, hey, my kid, you know, doesn't need an education, whatever. Um, I'm thinking Pink Floyd or whatever Led Zeppelin, whoever it is. I never thought I would fight with you guys to get my kid back into school, which just blows my mind. We have plenty of space in the community and if you guys so chose, you could get plenty of personnel resources to get these kids taught in these different locations throughout our community. So, um, the fact that you're, again, not having that as number one conversation piece every single meeting you guys ever have, I don't understand. Um, and then just my last comment is I'd like to know when I get my tax refund for the amount of time that my daughter has been out of school. And that's, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Eric Rice. You can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, so I heard, I believe, two nays tonight, uh, on the.
State your, your address, your name.
Sorry.
municipality.
Sorry. Sorry, Eric Rice, Seven Pino, Blaine, Horsham. I believe I heard two nays tonight, uh, but they were based on the March eighth date, which I agree is probably too quickly to pivot and come up with a new plan. And what I've heard is the next board meeting, it will be discussed, but, um, so I'd like to at the next board meeting. Um, as a taxpayer, know, let's set the date to September of next year and maybe we'll exceed expectations and that'd be awesome. But let's talk about a September return date and how we make that happen. And as I said, um, hopefully we'll exceed expectations, but let's get off the March eighth date. That might be too quick for, um, the board right now. And again, understand why, but all the procedural vote was around a March eighth date. So let's shoot for September and hope we can do it quicker and want to hear that discussion next board meeting. Thank you.
Okay, next we have a dial in number. Again, please remember to state your name, uh, and address, two, one, five, six, eight, eight, zero, one, seven, seven. You can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Tom Baron, fifty-six Church Road in Horsham. There was a lot of debate, uh, in the last twenty minutes or so about what exactly was getting voted on tonight and what wasn't and what's going to be tabled for, for next meeting. Can we get some clarification from the board exactly what's going to be discussed and or voted on at the next meeting as far as returning children to school? Cause I think after it, after the vote for March eighth got shot down, there wasn't real clarification as to what's going to be discussed or if it will even come back up again at the next meeting. And, and we really need that. We really need to have those discussions. Thank you.
Okay, next is Shelby Pagano. You can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Hi, this is Shelby Pagano, twelve twenty-four Noble Page Lane. My mailing address is Ambler, but I'm actually Horsham Township. Um, I was not going to talk tonight, but somebody has to. Um, I just want to thank you guys for all the work that you're putting in, Dr. Evanson. And the board, the administration, I know you're trying your absolute best and I believe that Dr. Evanson's presentation tonight started with what our mutual motivation is, our mutual goal, all of us, is to get these kids back in school. And the accusations being tossed around this community and sadly tonight by some members of this board, that that is not the common goal, is very disheartening to me as a parent in the community. Let's, let's all remember, Dr. Evanson is trying to follow the guidelines that are given to him by the CDC and by Montgomery County. Instead of blaming Dr. Evanson, take your argument where it starts, people. Go up to who is making these guidelines. He is not making them. Lastly, I'd just like to say. The board members that tonight tried to push through a hurried vote to send all of our children back into the building on March eighth with no plan for social distancing, no plan for where these classrooms were going to go or how these teachers were supposed to handle this. I, I'm completely disgusted, completely disgusted. As board members, it's your job to think this through. Sure. Some people might think you haven't done a good, good enough job of that yet, but they are working on it. And to say, I don't care. Now we're just going to push and just do it. For going any safety for our kids. It, it, it's a sad day in our community that members of our school board thought that that was a good idea. Thank you to those of you that did not allow that to go through. Good night.
Next we have Margaret. Uh, please state your name and address. You can go ahead and unmute and speak.
I'm Margaret Olson, fourteen Breda Lane, Horsham, Pennsylvania. I am speaking again tonight. Um, I agree with. And I don't remember the names. But if March eighth is too soon to get everyone back in school, maybe an option is to have a school board meeting before March eighth. You know, I agree with, what was their names? Jim Greenhall, I don't know if I said your name right, and Tara C. Olson and Jen Matten. And you know what? You're, you are supposed to be planning on how to get all the kids back five days a week. You know, not swapping every other Monday, like that is just confusing for children that have to go from one house to another. Um, it's just confusing in general. They have, you know, different end, end times when they're in school and then different end times when they're remote. If you could just even give the parents the option, hey, you know what? We're thinking about having the kids five days a week. But it will be under six feet and just tell us exactly what it could be. Is it four feet distance, three feet distance? What do you think of this? Do you want your kids in school? Give the parents the options. And maybe if possible, while they're eating, because that's important to me, that they have the six feet distance. That's good too. Just please give parents options. There's going to be parents that don't want their kids in school at all. Give them the right to get those options. There's also parents that want their kids in school five days a week. I am one of them. Please give us the options. March eighth, I don't know, I guess that's too soon, but honestly, you should be thinking about hiring teachers and substitutes and whatever, like this is something that should have been going on. There should have been interviews. You should have people in place. You know, like not all the teachers can come back. That's fine. I understand that. But you have to have your stuff in order, like. You know, there's a lot for you guys to think about. I understand that and thank you for doing what you've been doing. But honestly, this has just gone on too long, too long. These kids are depressed, they're stressed, they have anxiety, their social anxiety has gotten worse. It's, it's, they need to be around other children. Like you see all these studies, you hear about all these studies, how they have to be around the other students, their teachers, they have to be in school. And what are we doing about this? Like, I don't know, I ran out of time, but, um, please give us the options. Send out those questionnaires and the emails, you know, like the surveys. It could be anonymous, whatever. Thank you.
Okay, next we have O'Neil. Uh, please state your name and address. You can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Brian O'Neil, five thirty-one Vestry Drive. Ambler. I hear and understand and share a lot of the frustration that Jim expressed tonight. That, and, and no disrespect to the superintendent, but the taxpayers and the parents of this district deserve to hear what the plan is to get all kids back to school. And that plan should not have to wait each month for a new board meeting to talk about and vote on something that we don't really understand why there's a plan for only one grade to go back. Why isn't there a whole plan for K through five to go back? And then middle school and then the high school. That's the order that we want to do it in. But that plan should be presented and it should be established. We've had, you know, we had this discussion in August. We had no plan to go back in September, so we didn't go back and we didn't go back until November and and it's, it's it's very frustrating. And the reason that other districts are back now is because they've planned on how they're going to make the accommodations. And they don't all have the space to do six foot every time, every place, every building, every room. But we make our best accommodations. And those that are not comfortable with that are going to have the option of not sending their kid back and continuing remote learning. But our plan should be in place. And I think the school board, I think it's your job to demand that the administration have that plan in place for the next meeting with a date for each school to go back. It's not going to be ready by March eighth, but certainly a plan to bring the kids back should be done by then. So that we have a date expectation. If not March, we wait till an April board meeting, then we're talking about the school year is going to be over and no one will be back. And then September is the only realistic goal, which is really a crime. So I think that that's where I think we deserve, what we deserve to hear is a plan to bring each school back. And if the middle school has to be completely reorganized in terms of teachers. Then that tells me that the expectation is that they were never going to go back this year. So I certainly hope that there's room and available teachers and classroom activities that they can be sent back because they all deserve it and we all deserve a plan to get the kids in school before the end of this year. Thank you.
Okay, next is Cara Mundell. You can go ahead and unmute and speak.
Uh, hi, it's Alex Mundell. Uh, I live on Glen Devon Drive in Ambler. The first day I went into the hybrid model, one of my teachers couldn't tell me apart from the other student because of the nature of the online school. The teachers stared initials and don't have any connection with their students. This is really depressing. I don't even recognize my friends from last year.
Okay, um, sorry, that was my son. Um, I, um, I just wanted to comment on what Dr. Evanson said earlier about, um, the families that had agreed to the hybrid model because they could be sure that their kids would be six feet apart from the other students and that having them make a choice to have them less than six feet would be a really difficult thing to ask those parents to do. And I appreciate that he's looking out for everybody. I really do, but I'm not really sure how many of those families there are. Which is why, again, I think getting an actual survey of actual numbers would be really helpful. And I think we've been asking for this for months and haven't seen anything. And, um, if that's the case, then there is the virtual option for your kids. So if you're not comfortable with being less than six feet apart, your kids can attend Hatters Academy. We're just asking for a choice and I feel like we haven't been given one and it doesn't look like we're moving in that direction anytime soon. Thank you.
Okay, next is Justin Heath. You can go ahead and unmute and speak.
I want to address a couple of comments that were made tonight that I think are overblown, excuse me. One, there was a comment made by a board member citing that we would need hazmat suits to be in the classroom. I think that's overstepping the boundaries of what we're dealing with. We're not putting teachers in hazmat suits, we're not putting students in hazmat suits. What we're doing is asking for a viable option to return our children to five days instruction. Prior to the shutdown, which is 340 days ago, we had 27 and a half hours of instruction time inside the school setting, where that would be one-on-one with the teacher or small group settings. These kids were in class, in school, learning in different capacities with their classmates and with their teachers, speech therapists, literacy specialists. 27 and a half hours per week. We have been relegated and reduced to 12 and a half hours, if that, since this shutdown. Enough is enough. It is time for the school board members to take off their political hats, stop aligning themselves one way or another, and do the right thing and make a decision to get these kids back into school. We've had enough, we want the option. We want a survey, we want options to get our kids back. And I believe that's what everybody's asking for. And we know that many of you on the board want the same thing. We hear your frustration as taxpayers in the school district. We've been cheated. To echo Jim's sentiments about his frustration, I too will second that, because it seems as though we are 340 days later and we still do not have a working plan. We are going month to month, this isn't a month-to-month thing. If our neighboring towns and our neighboring school districts have put plans in place to bring back their kids at a more rapid pace than we have been able to do, that is a failure on our end. We need to step up, start getting real about this situation, and start putting in action in place to get these kids back. Bottom line, it's not taking the option away from anybody who wants to keep their kid virtual or who wants to keep their kid in a hybrid model. We want the opportunity as parents to be surveyed and given the right to bring our kids back five days in school. And those who don't want that, that's okay too. We're not trying to take that away from you.
Okay, next we have Michelle, please state your name and address, you can now unmute and speak.
Hi, this is Michelle Cunningham again, 133 Byberry Road in Hattboro. I do want to thank everyone for their hard work and the hard decisions that you're having to make. And you're thinking about all the students that have to attend there and not just some, and we appreciate that. I just want to, you know, thank you for that, and that's all I have to say. And I look forward to seeing what the plan will be for returning more students next month. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next we have Katie Matthews, you can, I'm getting a error, Katie, when I try to promote you to speak, that says you're using an older version of Zoom, so I cannot promote you to speak. I apologize for that. It's a technical thing that I can't control, you need to update Zoom on your device. Okay, and that is all the hands I see raised, Madam President.
Thank you, and Mr. Reiker, are there any other emails that need to be read?
No, there are not, Madam President.
Okay, are there any further comments from the board and superintendent? Ms. Schultz?
Thanks. Hey, I wanted to give a quick report on the MCIU Legislative Committee that we met this week, talked a lot about, actually, most of the meeting was talking about charter school reform, which is legislation action that's happening on the state level. You know, this year, it's been brought to the floor. There's a Republican and a Democrat House Representative for it. I don't want to, we've been a long meeting, so I don't want to get into too much detail. But what this is not about is taking away any choice. But what this legislation is about is leveling the playing field, making sure that charter schools have the same certifications needed and making sure there's a good education there. And there's also leveling out of funding. So the charter school reform that's on the table right now, and it's still early, but basically it would be having the tuition for charter schools set statewide at, I think it's $9,500 per student. Right now, Hattler Horsham spends like $15,000 per student. So this would be a huge tax savings, and I think just a win-win for the students of Pennsylvania. So I wanted to make sure you keep an ear out for that, there's gonna be a lot of talk about that going on. I have two more quick things. I wanted to remind everyone in the community that there are lunches and breakfasts available for all children. You do not have to be enrolled in the free and reduced meal program to participate. And it's any child between 0 and 18. Pickups for five-day-a-week lunches are Monday, 11 a.m. to 1:00 and 4:00 to 6:00, I think, at Keith Valley. Is that right, Mr. Reiker?
Correct.
Cool, thank you. One more thing, we've talked a lot about how mental health is an issue, and it's at every age, especially young people. And they're not as much in school as we want them to be, and there's not those resources there or even people there to recognize issues that might come up. We recently had some friends, and everyone's dealing with a lot of mental issues. So I want to make sure everyone knows, if there's any, if you ever have any questions or you're feeling bad, you can reach out to your counselors, you can reach out to us, you can reach out to friends, and you can always call the suicide hotline, or you can even text HOME to 741741 with no judgment, and someone will be there for you. So I just wanted to put out that, if there's any need, and talk about it with your kids. If there's an issue, talk about it, reach out to teachers or principals or counselors, they're there for you, even though we can't be there right now all the time. Thank you, I'm sorry for taking up so much time.
Ms. Schultz, Ms. McCouch? You are on mute.
Yes, yeah, I know, I saw. So, Dr. Everslag, I really want to make sure, I really appreciate all of the work that you put in. It is not going unnoticed, and I'm so appreciative. It's just my, I don't know, my frustration with our students. I've always been a children person, and it just breaks my heart listening to the emails, listening to the, you know, the callers, and it was just all about, just, I don't know, if there's something we can do about with, just asking the families, like, it is just, I don't know, if there's something we can think outside the box. I just want to appreciate, I do appreciate what you're doing. And I just needed to tell you that, it's not anything that I'm, I don't know, it's just not going unnoticed, you're working really hard, you've been put into a position in a very difficult time. And I just appreciate it.
Thank you.
I would like to second that.
Thank you.
I want you to know, I think the whole, the whole group of us, well, I know, I want you to know the same thing. I realize that you're working as hard as you are. I get that. So I just want you to know that I am also a person that observes all the work that you've done to keep it safe.
Thank you.
Mr. Coombs?
Yeah, I'm gonna keep this brief so we can end this board meeting. But none of us, not any single board member that was on this board in March, knew the fluidity of what we're gonna deal with during this pandemic. And I think, I, speaking for myself, I look in the mirror every day and I say, am I doing the right thing? And as long as you can look in the mirror and say you're doing the right thing, then all of the chatter that goes on in the back, you know that you are working with your administrators and you're trusting your administrators, and you're giving them the latitude and decision-making that we trust them to do. But it's not necessarily is the most popular thing to do. But at the end of the day, you know, when you look in the mirror, you're doing the right thing. And as a board member, that's the only thing I've done for the last 12 years. So this pandemic has been a fluid situation, and I thank our administrators for doing the best that they can do. And that's all I can say. So, the March 8th date, I think, is something that we as a board need to come back and say, okay, let's put a plan in place to get these kids back in the school. Nobody's, not one of these kids not to be back in school. Not one board member here has not wanted these kids to be back in school in September. So, that's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Coombs. Any other comments? Okay, so I'm looking for a motion for adjournment.
I make a motion, Teresa Brown, will adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, Susan Hunsinger-Hoff.
All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and have a good night. Our next meeting is a working meeting on Monday, March 1st.
Night.
Night.